All right, I've got six o'clock, so if everybody will please stand, we will do the prayer, and then if you'd remain standing, we'll do the prayers.
Lord Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We ask for wisdom. We ask you to bless this city and bless its residents and help us as we deliberate the future. We are thankful for our 200 years of existence, and we ask for your blessings over the next 200s. We ask for guidance of what we deliberate tonight, and may be in keeping with your will, and that we do it with humility and gay grace, and with the best thoughts of our citizens in mind. Amen.
All right, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order and do a little call.
Allers.
Present.
Allen.
Here.
Haltzleton.
Here.
Joe.
Here.
President.
Lester.
Here.
Michael.
Neely.
Present.
Thomas.
Here.
Young.
Present.
The adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 4A, miscellaneous agenda items, recognition of Bob Stiller, transit bus driver who's retiring. Mr. Stegman. And Mr. Miller. Mr. Stiller, thank you for being with us. Welcome to interview yourself and whatever comments you'd like to make.
Yeah, I'm Bob Stiller. I worked for Transit for 20 years, and before that, I was in construction, got too old for that, and did a job with the city, worked out just great, and I was so grateful for it, and that's about all I've got to say. You came here to get my key.
You're in the right spot.
We just wanted to thank you, Bob, for your service. You've got 20 years. Bob's one of them that, you know, never hardly called in sick, showed up every day. Bob opened a bus barn every morning, drove whatever we needed to drive, and did whatever we needed, everything else there, and his wife Stephanie put up with a lot of him calling and saying, "I'm gonna be late coming home today because somebody called in sick," or something there, so we appreciate all the work Bob did, and I'd like to have about five or six more just like Bob, so we appreciate what we got.
Yeah, I was late one time in 20 years.
We'll forgive you for that one.
Was that the day you wrecked your bike on the Greenway?
No, I made it.
We had a housing presentation last week, and it was interesting. Some of the comments in there was the importance of the bus service in this community and moving people around our community, so we very much appreciate what you do and what you do for our citizens and the people that depend on that service. And speaking for Mr. Stegman, it's good to have people that you know are always gonna be there, because the people are gonna be, as you all know, in the bus stops waiting We have a couple folks that are... for that bus to come along, so thank you.
We have many of the passengers still miss Bob.
Good boss.
He's a good guy. Well, we're gonna do a picture real quick. If you have anybody you want to come up, you're more than welcome to invite them. You would just come up, introduce yourself, and let us know what we need to know.
Yeah, you can stand right up front here.
James brought reinforcements.
Yep, we'll let her do all the talking.
Stand this way.
Right in front of you.
So I'm James Noah with Jeff City Firefighters.
Mike Watt.
Also a firefighter. And I'm Collier Nichols with Jeff City Police Department. We are some of the Guns and Hoses Board of Directors for Jeff City Guns and Hoses. Didn't really know we were gonna be on the agenda tonight, so I'm gonna give you a real quick spiel. We raise money for Safety Net, which is just like a backstopper for the St. Louis area, injured, critically injured, or first responders killed in the line of duty. Safety Net reaches out to the families and provides immediate financial support for the families. Unfortunately, in the last few years, Safety Net has paid out quite a bit, because the central Missouri, mid-Missouri areas lost several firefighters, law enforcement officers. But we take a lot of pride in raising money for Safety Net and donating the vast majority of our proceeds directly to Safety Net. The game is this Saturday. It is doors open at 6:00 PM, fortunately, but unfortunately, it sells out every year, and we are already sold out again, so the ice rink is at capacity, which is a great problem to have. Unless somebody builds us a bigger ice rink, we will continue to probably sell it out, which is, again, an excellent problem to have, especially for the community, for the ice rink. Shout out to Mr. Griffath over there and Missy at the ice rink for taking really good care of us. We appreciate all that they do to help us make this event possible. Real quick, the trophy is called the Gabby Cup, because several years ago, we did lose a communications operator that was very near and dear to... I know all of us worked with Erin Gabby-Dooler, so we named our trophy after Erin. She was a really good friend and a really good coworker to a lot of us, so in memory of her, we did name our trophy after Erin, so we do miss her a lot. Looking forward to the future, again, this year is a sellout again for the ice rink. We've had several teams from across the state, both police and fire, want to do a tournament. I don't know if we can pull it off. It would probably bring several hundred people to Jeff City to play a tournament, which would be great for the economic aspect, so I might be reaching out to Erin and Missy to see if we could pull something like that off, but it would be a couple-day event, it would probably fill up some hotels and mean some revenue for the city. So if we can do that, we certainly want to give back to the community and bring an event like that to Jeff City and bring a couple hundred people to Jeff City for a large gun versus hoses tournament with first responders. So I don't have much. I'll turn it over to these guys, and a little miss here, and if you guys have any questions, certainly we'll field your questions, so.
I don't have much, just what Collier said. We appreciate support with the community. We've got a lot of repeat customers, whether they be sponsors or attendees for the game, and the impact that it has for the tournament is awesome, to see that we can contribute that much annually to Safety Net as one of their probably premier fundraiser events for the year, and seeing the impact that it has on families during their untimely line of duty deaths, it's truly heartfelt.
The winner gets their name in graves on the show every year, and there's only one of ours on there, but lots of guns on there, but hopefully we can...
Come back.
Shout out to Chief Wildy for adding question seven on the resume, hockey experience for police officers, so.
We thought about a sign on bonus next year.
Yeah, it helped us, I don't know, it's recruiting, but.
We accused him of recruiting for the police department in Canada, so check his travel voucher.
Yeah, we'll definitely say hockey experience doesn't hurt, for sure.
Thanks for all you do for the community, obviously, on and off the ice. We are blessed in this community to have ice. Many communities would love to have the facility we have.
Absolutely.
I think we received, I think our councillor, there were like two ice sheets.
We could have a really big tournament then, for sure. Yeah, it was a great honor that some teams from even St. Louis, that they play a similar game on the Blues Rink, reached out and said, "We've heard your event is pretty great. We'd like to come down and play." So kudos to the city for allowing us to put something on like this, but again, if we can give back to local businesses and communities that donate to us, that would be great to hopefully pull off a bigger event next year, so.
Our Parks Department does an amazing job on everything they touch, and this one, they won't let me on the Zamboni yet, so it's all negotiating.
I know somebody, so maybe we can make that happen.
Any comments, questions?
Appreciate y'all, thanks.
Thank you.
I didn't see you. We have the Show Me State Air Show coming up. There she is. She couldn't make it last meeting, so thanks for rearranging and getting here tonight.
Yeah, sorry.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Penny Smith. I'm the director of Show Me State Air Show, and I just want to thank you all for the passage of the resolution last meeting. Greatly appreciated. I love the support that you guys have for the air show. It has been tremendously awesome to work with everybody, the police department, the fire department, Callaway and Cole Counties, everybody has been wonderful working together to make this happen. We're really excited this year. It's September 13th and 14th. Mayor Fitzwater is gonna kick things off right before the aerial portion of the show. We're excited to have you. Gates open at 9:00 AM, and we'll have lots of fun things to do. We've got classic cars, vintage military vehicles. We have a kids zone with lots of inflatables and hands-on activities and things like that. We have at least 60, 70 vendors that'll be there, merchandise, food. We have businesses looking for recruiting purposes, so they're there, taking advantage of the thousands of people that come each year, you know, a lot of them coming from out of town, so they're looking to grab those people up. We have, the aerial portion of the show is at 11:00 AM and lasts till 2:00, and it starts out with the Children of Fallen Heroes parachute team. Everything that they make, they give to kids who have lost their parent in the military. So definitely a great, you know, organization that we love supporting as well, and this year, we are recognizing, we always recognize our military, current and former, but this year, we're recognizing especially the Vietnam veterans. So our dinner on that Friday, the 12th, will be directed toward them, and we have Colonel John Clark, who was a POW at the time, doing our guest speaking at that dinner. Trying to think if there's anything I'm forgetting. Dair, you remember anything?
Pretty welcome.
Yeah, we're really excited this year. It'll be a great one. Of course, we have current and former military there as well, and is aircraft represented, so, and a lot of private, a lot of flip-floppers gonna be there. I don't know, I think I've covered, let me go, everything. Do they have any questions?
What time and where is that dinner at, ma'am?
Okay, so the veteran dinner is on the 12th, and then I can get with you on time some of the evening.
So much.
Sure.
I know we're the envy of many communities. This has taken off in a couple of years that it's been going, so it's credit to you and the team you've put together.
Yeah, we have a great, we have a great team. We've got several veterans on our team that are helping, and a lot of longstanding community members, so I feel very fortunate to work with a team that's just really gung-ho about it.
Amber Commerce said, "Nice weather for us last year," so. I hope the burden on Gary's back to have a great weekend.
Right. No rain this time, none at all.
Thanks so much for all you do. I think you inferred this, but there will be a career expo there.
Yes.
And it will have colleges along with employers, is that right?
Correct. Colleges will be there, tech schools will be there, flight schools will be there, military recruiting, everybody is coming. Manufacturers will be there, yes, lots of them.
Great opportunity for you to get your young adults out that may be thinking about college or looking for a job, and all of us in between.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
I just want to thank you. I took the grand son out there last year. They used just to have either the Blue Angels or the Thunderbirds coming to Jeff City, and I was always intrigued to sit over there, but they still had the drive-in, that's how long ago it's been, and all that, and I just wanted to tell you how flawlessly everything went from getting in and parking and just moving around in the big video screen with the veterans' story, you know, knowing a couple of people on there. That was really good and really moving, and I just want to say thanks, you know, I love everything about airplanes and all that, so I just wanted to tell you all, thank you all very much.
Great, great. Yeah, we'll have the videos again. This time, it'll be Vietnam veterans, yeah.
Thank you. Penny, again, just wanna ditto what everyone else is saying. I was there as an exhibitor for State Fair Community College last year, and I will be back. Yeah, yeah. Shameless plug, and I'll be there again, so, but as Jeff said, it was definitely easy flowing for us as exhibitors, and the crowd were very receptive, so I hope I can get to that dinner as well, so that's the next plan, yes.
Make sure you guys know when that is.
I just want to emphasize, bring the kids, because we're big with STEM discussions and so forth. There's nothing that warms my heart more than seeing women in particular in aviation, cranking wrenches, doing whatever. So anyway, there will be lots of activities for kids, young and old, so bring them along.
Sure, definitely.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Good luck. All right, that takes us to item five, opportunities for public comment. I think we have three individuals signed up. Mr. Stephen Sokoloff. Identify yourself, welcome. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Needing mayor, members of the council, my name's Steve Sokoloff, resident of Ward 5, also president of the Capital City United for Government, and just wanted to briefly address the 25.030, excuse me, and urge its defeat. I've been involved in a lot of legislation over the years, drafted lots, and a firm believer that in legislation as in medicine, the Hippocratic oath is equally appropriate, that is, first, do no harm. When there is not a need for, a specific need for a piece of legislation, the best course of action is to do nothing. In this case, there are no good reasons to pass this, and plenty of good reasons not to. There are all kinds of provisions in the statutes, including in Chapter 610, in Chapter 610-027 and 030, providing remedies for actual harm that may be caused by the improper disclosure of confidential information, and there is also injunctive relief that is available to preclude that from occurring where there are concerns with regard to specific information. On the other hand, the Sunshine Law preamble states very specifically in 610-011, and it's always good to think about this and remember this, says, "It is the public policy of this state that meetings, records, votes, actions, and deliberations of public governmental bodies be open to the public unless otherwise provided by law." And except as otherwise, and, excuse me, that all those exceptions shall be liberally construed, and their exceptions, excuse me, the provisions requiring open records shall be liberally construed, and the exceptions strictly construed to promote this public policy. So basically, the idea is that the state's policy is, with regard to public meetings, that they be open, and that they only be closed where it is essential. The other thing that needs to be made, I think that we need to remind ourselves, is that in 610-021, that which relates to closed meetings, says, "Nothing in this section shall require the closure of any meeting." So there's never a legal obligation to close a meeting. You can always have public discussions on everything. Now, obviously, there are occasions when you're discussing bids, disciplinary actions towards employees, health information of employees, those, obviously, there are justifications for their closure, and there are provisions that require, that allow you to close those and keep that information confidential, and that there are provisions that provide for punishment for the improper disclosure of that information. However, just because something is discussed in a closed meeting does not make it a closed record, that once the action is complete, that is no longer closed unless there is another provision of law that requires its closure. This, the proposed change to the city code, would act as, I would suggest, a strong violation of the First Amendment in that it is a prior restraint on what is pure political speech by members of the council, whose obligation it is to speak publicly on matters of concern to their constituents. This prevents that, and it prevents it, and subjects them to punishment, to, and including, the loss of their ability to participate in city business if they discuss anything that occurs in what has been determined a closed meeting. It prevents them from challenging the fact that the subject of that closed meeting was in fact proper under the statutes, and to consult with outside counsel about that. So there's lots of reasons to not pass this, lots of reasons against it, and I would urge the council to not pass it. Thank you.
Mr. Paul Sampson, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Paul Sampson with the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership, and I've got two items I want to speak about today, but I think I can do it in four minutes, so. The first one is the resolution that authorizes the conference center incentive process to begin. As we discussed at the work session a few weeks ago, the Conference Center Project Financing Plan anticipated using certain incentive programs to generate revenue on the project site, which would ultimately pay off bonds that are utilized to construct the project. Then at the administration meeting earlier this month, we presented a incentive implementation schedule that was prepared by Gilmore &amp; Bell, the city's bond attorney, which detailed all the steps that were necessary to put all those incentive programs in place. The bill before you today just simply authorizes city staff and Gilmore &amp; Bell to begin that process. In that process, over the next several months, there'll be various public hearings that'll be required, and ordinances that will have to be approved as required by the statutes that govern each of those processes. So with the approval of the resolution tonight, the schedule anticipates the incentive programs over the next several months, and then all those would be in place by early 2026, that would be just prior to any of the bonds being issued for construction for that project, so we encourage you to approve that resolution. The second item that I wanted to speak about was the parking operations contract with PCI Municipal Services. While the parking operations contract isn't directly related to the Conference Center project, the work that the operator will do does have implications for the project. The immediate need is for the operator to develop a displacement plan that would relocate existing parking customers to other facilities and other locations throughout the city. With the demolition expected to be beginning in November of this year, that process needs to start as soon as possible. That way, it'll give PCI ample time to work with the leaseholders and downtown businesses in order to work on that displacement plan. The parking operator is also gonna be needed to provide input into the design of the new parking garage. As the conference center design team progresses through schematic design, they're evaluating many aspects of the project for value engineering opportunities. One of the things that we would like the operator to look at is identifying opportunities to increase the utilization of the existing parking assets that the city has. Ultimately, that could lead to a reduction in the number of spaces that are required in the new parking garage. They'll also be tasked with providing information to the project financing team on what future revenues might look like in the parking division with bringing on the new parking garage. Those estimates will then be put into the bond models to anticipate what the funding from parking revenues can be applied to the project. Throughout this process, PCI will work with the city and the downtown businesses and other stakeholders to create, really, a custom parking experience for Jefferson City that invites visitors to downtown and makes, you know, parking downtown a more enjoyable experience, so we encourage you to approve that resolution as well.
Thank you, sir. Last person we had signed up, Mr. Scott Randolph. You just identify yourself, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name's Scott Randolph. I live in 1623 Del Cero. I just want to echo what Steve Sokoloff said earlier. I had a letter to the editor that was published in the Sunday paper about the proposed ordinance on closed session. I'll just let that stand as it is. But what I am particularly concerned about is the reporting in the newspaper that the council had requested to review redacted information that was submitted with the market study that is supporting the Conference Center bill, and that there was a reporting that that request was denied. I have some experience with this. I was director of government relations for 25 years for a large corporation in Washington, DC, and we dealt with proprietary information and regulatory proceedings all the time. And it was structured in a way in which we encouraged parties to come forward and provide information to policymakers or elected officials like you that help you make decisions, but it never meant that that information would be put on a proceeding, on record in a proceeding, but then denied to the policymaker or the elected official. When I go back and looked at the market study, pages 35 through 56 are redacted and closed under Section 610-021, in parentheses, 12, of the Missouri statute. That's the Sunshine Law. And assuming that there is a legitimate reason for that to be proprietary, it seems like that they are acceding to agreeing that the Sunshine Law is sufficient to keep this data proprietary. And I think that as council members, as elected officials, you have a fiduciary duty to citizens to make the best decisions you can, particularly with the Conference Center that's coming up, and the money that's involved. And that means to avail yourself with all the information and the data that underlines this project, so that you can make the right decision. And so I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board. I think, personally, I'm not an attorney, I'm actually an economist, and I love this kind of stuff. I dig into this kind of markets data and that kind of thing. But I think that, it seems to me that the Sunshine Law, existing legal protections are there, you should be able to see that data, you have a right to it, you paid for it, the taxpayers paid for it, and I think that it's very helpful to move forward with the Conference Center. I think that, you know, personally, I think this community needs to grow, it should grow. That's going to take very bold action, it's gonna take a lot of risk, and I know that the council is looking at that, the mayor's looking at that, but you need to be operating under the best information that you have. And I hate to be seeing this provision, this part of the data that's so important for your decision in the Conference Center project, to be used as a political football or be held hostage for these proposed ordinance. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all we had signed up, so that'll take us to item six, public hearings. First public hearing is on Bill 2025-028.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the calendar year 25.
Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. State statute requires that cities establish their proper tax rates on an annual basis. Each political subdivision is required to hold a public hearing to officially adopt the tax rates and to file such rates with the county clerk's office by September 1st. These rates are computed based on changes in the assessed valuation and also an inflation calculated with CPI index. The initial information is prepared by the county, and the calculations are verified by the Missouri state auditors.
And I think that it's very helpful to move forward with the Conference Center. I think that, you know, personally, I think this community needs to grow. It should grow. That's going to take very bold action. It's going to take a lot of risk. And I know that the council is looking at that. Mayor's looking at that. You need to be operating under the best information that you have. And I hate to be seeing this provision, this part of the data that's so important for your decision in the Conference Center project, to be used as a political football or be held hostage for these proposed ordinance. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all we had signed up, so that'll take us to Item 6, Public Hearings. First public hearing is on Bill 2025-028.
An ordinance to the City of Jefferson, Missouri, providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the City of Jefferson, Missouri, for the calendar year 25.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. State statute requires that cities establish their property tax rates on an annual basis. Each political subdivision is required to hold a public hearing to officially adopt the tax rates and to file such rates with the county clerk's office by September 1st. These rates are computed based on changes in the assessed valuation and also an inflation calculated with CPI index. The initial information is prepared by the county and the calculations are verified by the Missouri State Auditor's Office. The proposed FY '26 budget has been prepared based on the property tax rate of .46 for the general fund and .0961 for Fireman's Retirement Fund, for a total rate of .5561. This is the same rate as the current financial, current fiscal year, so the proposed tax rate would stay the same. And I'm asking that council approve this tax rate, which is what the FY '26 budget is built on, so that we can get these submitted to the county clerk's offices.
Okay. The hearing is open. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of the recommendation? Anybody in opposition? We will close the hearing on 2025-028. Any comments or questions from council? All right, hearing done. You have 2025-028 in front of you for a roll call.
Allers.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Boselson.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Cam Peter.
Aye.
Bluster.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Will passes.
All right, Item B is on the GRT, Public Hearing.
City Code Section 17-207 requires the city to review their gross receipts utility tax rate, or GRUT, on an annual basis. The proposed FY '26 budget has been prepared based on the gross receipt utility tax of 6% for those engaged in the business of selling and distributing natural gas, manufactured gas, steam, electricity, or both gas and electricity. And 7% for those engaged in the business of furnishing telephone service or telecommunications services. This is the same rate as the current fiscal year, so the proposed tax rate would stay the same. I'm actually asking that council agree with the current rates remaining the same. And City Code Section 17-207 states that after a public hearing, if the rate to be levied for the subsequent year is different from that currently levied, the city council shall by ordinance establish a new gross receipts tax levy for the subsequent fiscal year. The existing gross receipts tax levy shall continue if no change in the rate is directed by council.
Public hearing is open. The recommendation is to keep the tax level the same. Is there anybody to speak in support of that? Anybody to speak in opposition? As Ms. Perry indicated, if there are no changes, then council doesn't need to make any action, so it will continue. Councilman Thompson.
Just a quick question for the folks here and at home. GRT means what?
Gross Receipts Utility Tax.
Thank you.
Can you tell me how, is that a proprietary fund, the tax go into a proprietary fund?
It is not. It goes into the general fund revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item C, 2025-2026 Operating Budget. Perry.
This public hearing is intended to give citizens an opportunity to comment on the FY '2026 budget before we start our budget committee discussions on Thursday. The budget bill will be introduced at the September 2nd council meeting. And there will be an opportunity for public comment at every public hearing that we have on the schedule. No action is required, just giving an opportunity for public comment for any citizen who chooses.
Okay, so the public hearing is open on the proposed budget. Anybody to speak in favor of that at this time? Anyone to speak in opposition? All right, we will close the hearing. As Ms. Perry indicated, there will be a number of opportunities for public comment as that budget is rolled out, so no actions required by council at this time. As we indicated in the pre-meeting, Item 6D, we're postponing the hearing on that. It's on Pending Bill 2025-029. Councilman Lightfoot.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put that on the informal calendar.
We'll push that poll to the next meeting. All right. Item 7A, Appointments by the Mayor. You have a list on, beginning of Page 2 on your agenda.
I'd like to give my time to Councilman Ayers. Councilman Ayers, Miss...
No.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the slate as presented to us. It came out of the Administration Committee meeting with unanimous vote.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, takes us down to Item 8A, Presentation from Staff, Consultants, and Invited Guests. We do have three very distinguished groups with us. So, I see a lot of friendly faces in the audience, so I thought what might work is if the three groups, those that want to be involved, if you want to come forward, we'll kind of do them one at a time and allow you to talk about your organization. But we have the Master Gardeners, Bittersweet Garden Club, which I had an opportunity to speak to, I think about a year or so ago, and Capital City Garden Club. So, those, I assume you have a spokesperson, but you're welcome to bring anyone else up. And then I'll read the certificates, and then we'll do pictures kind of all at one time, rather than kind of moving back and forth three times. So, if you want to come forward, you're more than welcome. One brave soul. There's a couple brave souls. Everybody may come up. That is fine. All right, we've got the Master Gardeners listed first, so we have a spokesperson?
Yes.
You just introduce yourself, and then you're more than welcome to introduce all these amazing people that are with you.
My name is Diane Speaker. I live at 924 Cary Ann Drive here in Jefferson City. And I'm, we're very happy, the Central Missouri Master Gardeners are very happy to receive this recognition, Mayor Fitzwater and city council members. And we would just like to note that this is our 30th year here in Jefferson City. Thirty years ago, we became a chapter officially of the University of Missouri Extension. And over those 30 years, we've trained hundreds of our new members to be master gardeners. In fact, we have a class beginning this Thursday evening, August 21st, be there at 5:30, and you could still register. You can call the Extension Center. The Extension Center is at 2436 Tanner Bridge Road. Their number is 573-634-2824. We're very pleased to be here, and I think that's all for this club.
Who do you have with you? There's a huge group here.
Deb Rademan, our greenhouse manager, Kathy.
April.
Janelle.
We're back here.
Our chair presently is Ed Vitale, his wife Kathy, Beth Price, Eve, Martha, and that might be Bob.
Bob's in the back.
There he is. Yeah, he's, he goes to church with me, so. See, and Janelle's around the corner, neighbor. I know you have an amazing yard, because I...
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
The work that you do. Well, the certificate just says Central Missouri Master Gardeners in recognition of your exceptional dedication, accountless volunteer hours spent enhancing our community through gardening education, beautification projects, and landscape development across Jefferson City and surrounding areas. And again, I can attest to my neighborhood. I've got some neighbors that do an amazing job. And we just approved, I think, a beautification for the downtown area at the last council. So, we are proud of our city, and we're proud to show it to people coming in. And we appreciate what you're doing out in the neighborhoods. So we'll present that in just a minute, and we'll go through the other groups, and we'll give council an opportunity to say some things. And then we'll do pictures with each group, just so we don't get council up two or three times.
May I approach the city clerk with a pamphlet that shows...
You may absolutely do that.
...the organization and who we partner with here in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, who's the brave soul for the City Garden Club?
I guess that's me.
That's you. You just identify yourself.
I'm Janice Schwalter, and I'm the president of Capital Garden Club currently and the longest-standing member of Bittersweet Garden Club. I won't tell you how long that's been. Capital Garden Club is relatively new. We're only 17 years old. And we have 14 very active members and a couple people in a nursing home. So, we've been very happy to be active in Jefferson City. We've done a shape, color, and scent garden at Memorial Park for children. A kindness rocks, now, that doesn't mean you put rocks. It means kindness rocks. The rocks with inspirational messages on the Greenway Trail off of School Street. And we've also placed seven Blue Star memorial markers honoring veterans in the area. One down by the governor's mansion, one at the National Guard headquarters, one in the national cemetery at Lincoln University Soldiers' Hall. And we did two at Russellville, that's not Jefferson City. And we facilitated the Gold Star Memorial by Federated Garden Clubs at the Capitol. And for your information, the very first Blue Star Memorial was put here in Jefferson City sometime between '50 and '54 by Hawthorne Garden Club. And it was one of the original ones on Highway 50, which was the Blue Star Memorial Marker. Thank you for honoring us. Members of Capital Garden Club, raise your hands and step forward. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of us out of the 14.
Someone invited me to their beautiful home to speak to you, I think it was about a year or so ago. So, thank you very much. It was a very pleasant evening. Councilwoman, Councilman was in the third ward, so a very beautiful house up on the north side of our town. The certificate says Capital City Garden Club. She honored eight years of growing kindness and beauty in our community from planting an apple tree along the Greenway to providing kindness. Rock garden, your efforts have brought joy to many. Your colorful century planters at Memorial Park invite children to explore nature through touch and smell. Thank you for making our city bloom. We appreciate that. Last but not least, our last group, I may have...
I think you read it.
I read the wrong one, so let me read the Bittersweet. Bittersweet, everybody's looking. That's not us at all. She just said 30-some years. Bittersweet Garden Club, in recognition of your exceptional service to our community through beautification, education, and outreach. Your work in tree markers, memorial landscaping, scholarships, and nursing home visits has made a lasting impact on Jefferson City. We thank you for your dedication to growing both gardens and goodwill. Hopefully, that references you. Now, I think we have...
That's Bitter Sweet. That's Bitter Sweet. Linda is the president of Bittersweet. I'm president of Capital. Linda is president of Bittersweet.
All right, who did we miss?
Bittersweet is who you missed, but my name is Linda Olchweiger, and I am the president of Bittersweet Garden Club. And thank you so very much for this honor. We really do take it to heart. All of our sore muscles, you know, this is, this is the payoff sometimes for it. We spend a lot of time, as Ron mentioned, making the city more beautiful with all of our own beautiful gardens. But we also help the city out in the parks by planting and maintaining the park entrance at Memorial Park. If you've noticed, the garden that's there, that is one of our projects. We also work in the community to help both the young and the old. We have a project called Garden Therapy. And every month, a group of us will go around to one of the nursing homes in the area. And they do a little, you know, project with them that has something to do with flowers and that sort of thing, which they love. And of course, we bring lots of treats for them, and it is so well-received that we're kind of getting to the point where, my gosh, can we take on anymore? But we love it, and they love it. We also help the young. We give scholarships, nice scholarships, every year to those who want to study in the horticulture field, which is, it's just been great for us. We also have a newer project called Teacher Grants. Sometimes, you know, teachers, they really want to offer some kind of a class, a little extracurricular thing, but in order to do it, they need supplies. And to do that, they have to take them out of their own pockets. So, this is a grant that they can apply for and get the funds for the class that they're, that they want to present. So, we're very proud of our work and just enjoy being a part of what the city has too. So, thank you very much.
Don't forget our garden tour.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Alice. Yes, every year, we do have a garden tour. And some of you, I hope, is, have you ever attended a garden tour? Well, you must, yes, thank you. Those of you that haven't, you must attend sometime. But it's an opportunity to actually visit and go in the backyards without being arrested to see some of these beautiful gardens that we have in the city. And that's how we raise funds. We also had a garden party last year that we raised a lot of funds for. So we do all of that too. Did I forget anything else, Al?
Very good job.
All right. All right. Thank you again. We appreciate it very much.
Great to see you again. I know we spent some time in association world.
Yes.
I know you have a beautiful yard, because I walk by it occasionally.
I would like to say something. Capital also has a garden therapy program. And we have served over 1,500 people during this last year in the nursing homes. That is a national and a statewide project for all garden clubs.
Thank you. Council, any comments? And then we'll do each group. Councilman Wood.
I just, for that, appreciate all the garden clubs and master gardeners for what you do in the beautification of the city. I know with master gardeners, my great-granddaughter participated in one of your programs. I think it's listed under Youth Garden and Grow Program at Lincoln, which also involved, she was with the Boys and Girls Club. So I appreciate you linking up with other organizations and especially with youth, young people. I mean, my great-granddaughter was so excited about growing vegetables and showing us and telling us about what she had grown. So, thank you for all your work.
I wanted to thank the Bittersweet Garden Club especially this year for featuring a native garden on the garden tour for the first time this year. So thank you for exposing kind of the beauty of gardening that's native to Missouri and perhaps they had never seen before. And that has been really well-received in my circle, so.
Good. Good to hear.
I just want to mention that I moved here five and a half years ago. And a big part of the decision to move here was the gardens and the parks and so forth. And the work that you guys do with, you know, the streetscaping and the entrances to the parks, et cetera, pays off in a lot of ways. And of course, there's, we can all use a whole lot more beauty in our lives, so thank you for that.
I think that was good. A hand signal for Mr. Griffin. Did you have a comment, sir?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to thank all three groups for the work that they do within the JC Parks. And I know Diane kicked us off, and I wouldn't be remiss if I didn't share that the Central Missouri Master Gardeners, all that they really do to add to what you... the central Missouri master gardeners, all that they really do to add to what she said. I know all three groups do a lot. The master gardeners, they grow the majority of our annuals for our city and parks each year. They've built a third greenhouse to keep up with annual plant production. Previously maintained a demo garden in North Jefferson City prior to the 2019 flood. They also maintained the McCabe Park entrance sign like the other groups conduct the maintenance on the other ones. They maintain the Grand Street Island Riverside Park. And then also, last year due to staffing shortages, they helped us plant with spring annuals as well, saving the city some significant amount of money for that assistance. And then finally, we're excited to announce they're collaborating with the River Market project as well, so we're very excited to have all three groups, but I definitely wanted to thank Diane and the group for all that they do. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, we will try to get, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just want to thank all three groups. I didn't know exactly where you would be on the agenda at the start, so thanks for bearing with us for the group's turn. But yeah, what each group does is remarkable and having family members who have, you know, spent a lot of time in nursing homes to know folks are going in and providing a bright spot is very meaningful. Thank you.
All right, well, we have the Capitol City Garden Club come up first, council behind us, we'll do pictures and all the welcome to stay.
She's, she'll get. Oh, all of us. All of us. All righty, oh, come on. Ditch this.
Who wants to be the official certificate? Oh, get in there. You gonna retake? Sounds good. Molly takes.
One, two, three. Somebody put marker.
Thank you. See if they can figure it out. Perfect. All right, who wants to receive this certificate? Perfect. It's great to see you again.
Yes, you too.
One, two, three.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Central Missouri Master Gardeners. All right, who's receiving this one?
Thank you, sir.
That was good.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you should be in front of that.
How we doing?
Ready? One, two, three.
You're sitting right there.
Where did somebody take ours?
Thank you very much.
All the welcome to stay, but we understand it behead for the director. That was fun, one of the amazing groups, thank you for everybody involved in that. That takes us to item nine, announced with the mayor, council staff, Councilwoman Allard and Nick Miller.
Administration, September third, food and bank.
Councilwoman Lick, you got two in a row, budget and finance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In place of the finance, of course, will be budget and that'll open up this Thursday at 5:30.
All right, what safety, Councilwoman Jones?
Yes, our next meeting is Thursday, August twenty-eighth, at 3:30 in the police training room.
Public works, Councilwoman Lester?
They would be Thursday, September eleventh, at 7:30 here in council chambers.
Councilman Housleton, you had a couple of comments you wanted to make?
A couple of notes from planning and zoning. Very recently, we're continuing our work as far as adding some of the restrictions and building codes and I don't know if you want to take an opportunity and summarize some of the things that we're looking into, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, if you would mind, I'd be happy to, so we kind of, we consider this a bit of our second phase of really looking at the zoning code, kind of looking for opportunities that might impede housing developments. So we've got kind of a package that we'll be bringing forward that we introduced at the planning and zoning last week, kind of three groups. The first being looking at setbacks for housing development. The second is looking at really the administrative process to bring flats and PUDs through planning and zoning and seeing if there's ways to streamline that a little bit. And the last being opportunities for some increase in multifamily locations throughout town and other kind of forms of housing, not just single. So we'll be taking some time to reach out, I think, to interest, you know, to the stakeholders for housing within the community, getting some feedback on some of those ideas. We've gotten some comments and feedback, spoke also with council members on some of these ideas as well, so we're looking to kind of get some community feedback on that and hopefully bring back a package of those to plan and zoning in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is, okay. Thank you very much. Takes us to item ten, consent agenda, you have one item on there in the minutes.
I consent, I mean, I make a motion.
Motion, we have second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, bills introduced, twenty, twenty-five dash zero-three-zero.
In order to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter two regarding a duty to preserve confidentiality by elected officials.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. This bill would adopt a new section of the city code at two-dash-eight that establishes a duty to preserve confidentiality for elected officials, also extends that duty to members of city boards, committees, and commissions. Essentially, what this does, it states that where mayor council members apply with confidential records or attends a closed, a closed, a closed meeting of the city pursuant to the Missouri Sunshine Law, that there is then a duty to preserve confidentiality of those closed items. And breach of that duty to preserve confidentiality has the potential for discipline after trial by a conducted by the city council. That could include in situations where the city council deems appropriate, a termination that breach of confidentiality in, sorry, constitutes an interference with the operation of the city, which is prohibited under the charter and thus would make the breaching council member subject to removal from office once and after trial with provisions of the city charter and city code. I would happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Can you explain to me, please, how this is any different from what is already written within city code, city charter, and sunshine laws?
There is no duty to preserve confidentiality by any particular mayor, county, or elected official, so there could be protections that are in provisions of the law, but there is no overarching duty to preserve confidentiality.
Is that not implied by the oath of office that we take that we'll faithfully follow the laws of the Constitution and of the state of Missouri and the city?
No, because there is no duty to confidentiality.
So under a duty of confidentiality, if a person is sitting in a closed meeting and some things come up that knowingly should not be in a closed meeting, how would a person rectify that situation?
So this only applies to closed information and so if information is discussed or taken up in a closed session, then I would say that there are provisions in the Missouri Sunshine Law that allows for reporting to the attorney general. I don't think this does anything to that, to those rights. You can also consult with attorneys what the Sunshine Law says, and so I don't think this impacts the right of an elected official to take advantage of other provisions of law that have procedures for reporting a problem. Like I said, this only applies to closed records, I don't think it would apply to wrongly closed records.
And further, I know that a question was asked in the admin committee meeting about whether or not a councilperson could seek alternate counsel other than the city attorney and the answer to that appeared to be that no, the city attorney was the end authority of anybody that could discuss and that strikes me as a straight-out constitutional violation.
I would have to disagree with that. So what the Sunshine Law does, it sets up the attorney general's office and the city attorney essentially act as a safe harbor for elected officials. And so if an opinion is had from the city attorney that something is in line with the Sunshine Law, you know, that provides protection to that elected official, that they can then proceed forward and not, you know, be subject to penalties under the Sunshine Law, you go to a private attorney and have no protection. And so the first stop should always be the city attorney.
Go through the questions at this time. Councilwoman Jones?
Do you question for Ryan? Ryan, at any point in the, in the meeting, if someone disagrees with the subject at hand that is being discussed, can a, as long as a court was not affected, can that person just say, I don't think this should be a closed session and get up and leave a closed session?
Yes, they could. There's also procedures for making a formal objection so that couldn't happen.
And then, second of all, a closed session can be opened by a majority of the council vote to make those records open?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, Peter?
So on the, I guess it's an example, if, if closed information or information during a closed meeting is given to the newspaper or given out and it's not finalized yet or it's closed information, what we have now, all we, there's nothing we can do, correct?
Yeah.
And so as, what the admin, what this brought up, why this was brought up was it's not to stop stuff from coming out, it's to stop somebody from giving RFP information out, stuff that's not closed yet, which happens on a daily basis. I mean, stuff comes out of the closed meetings all the time and we have nothing, we can't do anything about it. So it's not stopping them from doing it, it's just giving us a reason to say, hey, okay, maybe they shouldn't be in the next closed meeting so they can think about, hey, you know, or if every week we have a closed meeting and they give information out, maybe they should not be in the closed meeting. That's the reason I think it was brought up through the admin committee and that's how I took it, through the admin committee, is seeing it's not to stop information from leaving council or not being public, it's to stop a person from keep, continuing to give information that's not supposed to be given at the time. Is that correct? I mean, I know some of it was my opinion, but.
I think that's a fair characterization.
Councilwoman Lester, then, Councilwoman Young?
About six months ago, one night, I guess, we approved disciplinary procedures and that was to prohibit conduct that was inappropriate by law or ordinance or policy. You have that, it seems like that would cover what you're talking about with closed session as well. Why doesn't what we already have cover that?
Because there's not a resolution ordinance or policy that specifically prohibits disclosure of closed information. So those disciplinary procedures require a reference, so if you're going to accuse someone of doing something wrong, it requires a reference to the ordinance or policy that is being violated. If someone breaches confidentiality, there's no reference that can be set, there's no duty to not leave a closed session and go talk about it. That's what, that's what this is attempting to put in place.
Yes, I'm not sure about that, but okay.
Councilwoman Young?
My question is pertaining to subjectivity of this ordinance. Who's to determine, like if I was accused of disclosing information, who would be the determinant of that? If I say I did not, it's a verbal conversation, how would you go about making a determination on that or how would a determination be made on that?
City council that would make those determinations. So the discipline that's set forth in this code is only available after trial by the city council.
About what information would the council be using to make the final?
I think that's very, very fact-dependent. That would be the information that is presented at a trial.
I think, first of all, it is a very serious topic and I appreciate our discussion about it. I also have heard from many people that really have a concern about transparency and I have that concern and I also have a concern about, you talked about interfering with city business, is that what you said?
I believe it's- Direct interference with the conduct of the departments which are responsible for the subject of the closed information.
So I have a little bit of concern about that because we seem to throw that around a lot with all respect and I'm not sure that that is very well-defined. So I have, you know, it's something that certainly I'm taking under consideration and I want everyone to know how serious that I am taking it, but I also feel like there are things that are gotchas in here. That would be one. Another one would be, for instance, the yard waste that was voted on in closed session before many of us were here, but not everybody. Based off an attorney's recommendation, it could be done. If the whole council, if the majority of the council had not voted to bring that out, they could not have talked about it without a penalty. And so transparency is really important and that's really my big concern here is that you either get an attorney opinion, and I'm not speaking about you at all because I certainly respect you, so you either get an attorney opinion about something that should be closed that- that truly is not in the, in public's best interest to be closed. And I think that's what we're really talking about here. And making sure that there aren't subjective things happening that then someone is being brought to task for. So, those are my couple of concerns. And the transparency is what I hear most from the people calling. So, I appreciate your work on this a lot. And I just appreciate everybody's thinking about this and working on this. I also appreciate us keeping politics out of this. We are a nonpartisan council. And so, I encourage all of us to keep it as a council business and to make sure we are not bringing in politics to this. This is not about a party or anything like that. This is about council business, which is what is the best for the city and their residents. So, I appreciate everybody keeping that in mind. Thanks.
Congressman Thomas?
Well, you've mentioned several times duty to preserve confidentiality is, is what you feel is missing out of the equation. We've got other codes, et cetera, that in my mind cover the punishment side. Why can we not just have a, a straight acceptance that we have a duty of confidentiality, period, end of sentence?
I think you can. I mean, this is, this is a council, but it's, if, if, if that is what the council decides that they want and is appropriate for this council, then my, my analysis is that that duty is symbolic. Which is fine. Lots of cities do it that way. But, you know, this, just, that's the analysis. That duty is symbolic. There's no quote-unquote teeth behind it. So, if someone were to violate that symbolic duty, the rest of the council wanted to do something, the tools will be very, very little.
So, why would that not fall back on the disciplinary measures that are already in place?
If there, if there is an alternative, are you, I, I guess I'm kind of misunderstanding what you're saying. So, are there alternative policy?
I'm saying that, that the, the city council last year passed into ordinance and city code disciplinary actions that can be taken. When the council people walk out of school, whatever. Why couldn't we not, with a duty to preserve confidentiality, just leave it go at that and let that take care of it? And also, I, I just have to say, the big, the whole reason, as far as I know, that this conversation is even coming up is because of the redacted pages on publicly-available website regarding the conference center. And upon request to find out what those were, what those redacted pages were about, it was represented that basically the, the city council did not have the trust, I guess, of city staff, is the way to put it, to, to have that information.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. That is a complete unfair mischaracterization. And I will read you the city code. This is code.
Please.
Please bear with me.
Take your time, Congressman.
Section 23E. Access by elected officials. No elected official shall, shall have any greater right to access closed records of the city than the public at large, except as to: 1. Minutes of executive sessions involving the bodies on which they hold an official seat; 2. Records which the appropriate public body has voted to make accessible to the official; 3. Records required by law to be accessible by an official. This has nothing to do with trust by staff of city council members. This has to do what's written in the city code and has been there for 30 years. We follow staff, we follow the code. And when the code says that an elected official does not have access to closed records unless the public body votes to make it open to those people, then we follow that code. It has nothing to do with trust. That's a very unfair mischaracterization. Well, and, and the follow-up conversation to that was, "We think it makes a lot of sense for the city council to have this information. We just have to go through the procedures to do so." Because that's what's written in the city code.
Well, I, I would submit that that information is in the public sphere anyway because the representing consultant that, that built that information, the consultants working on the project had that information. Numerous city staff has that information. And I guess I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we can be transparent without having to be punished for it, is, is my point. And we don't need to debate this all night, right here, right now. This is just a bill introduced, but I can...
Well, I think there are people who want to talk on it, so... I have two questions. I know Councilman Lickel and Councilman House. The reason for this document has been conflated in this meeting. It has nothing to do with the discussion that has been presented. There was an issue that was addressed. There was a recommendation that council proceed with some type of policy. Missouri Municipal League was questioned as to, "Do you have a policy that other cities have been used?" I think it was forwarded to the document that was created that's brought back to this body. And now, we're saying that that never existed, there was never a reason. And I guess my question is, it was on an unrelated issue that has been purported tonight, but there was a reason the council decided that this body needed a document. There was queries as to how to do that. It was our legal counsel, who has a long distinguished career, was sent that, and you crafted a document based on what was directed by council. Is that inaccurate?
No.
My second question is, when a group of 10 people, and we take a vote every time to go into closed session, 10 people indicate they want to go into closed, 10 people indicate that they're comfortable with the discussion items that are available in advance to council of what's going to be discussed, 10 people talk about it, 10 people come up with an action, 10 people assume that all 10 are going to adhere to, "This is closed-session material." Right or wrong? I'm saying 10 people agree that this is closed session. And then, they see it in the newspaper. Is that not awkward when we're debating a policy? The council can vote down if they want to vote it down. The council asked for the policy to come back to them, which you did? Is it not awkward to see it in the newspaper before we've decided what the policy's going to be? You don't have to answer that. That's a Councilman like one.
Mr. Mayor, just a brief question. And I know, Ryan, you probably can't directly answer this, but, but maybe a broad percentage of municipalities that would have something like this already on their code have any idea? Small number, large number, medium number?
Be, I, eh, less than 50, more than 30. That's nothing more than a guess.
And a question I was asked, and I think I know the answer to this, but just to ask the question, and anyway, I'll just ask the question. NDAs, is it because it's city business, is that why an NDA wouldn't be able to be used in, in any of these instances?
So, there are opportunities for limited use of NDAs. You know, generally, they can be avoided. That's a good idea. But sometimes you would want, and a, a private company would want an NDA because they have, you know, proprietary information that they can't have out before an action. That would be in very, very rare and limited circumstances. It's, I don't, I don't, it, it is a fine sometime answer. I would never want to use it on a regular basis for routine business.
Thank you.
Congressman Camp, then Congressman Allen.
So, it's kind of, we're all over the place here. So, when, when this was asked by council, or, yeah, since we're going to be, give me a word here for a second. Transparent. So, Derek, when you asked MML to, the day after this meeting, to provide us with information on confidentiality agreement, they gave you this model, which was then forwarded to staff following day. And it says, you know, what, what was wanted at the top. And it says, you know, they give it to several other cities to use as well. So, it's not something that's new. Some of this wouldn't have come up, I don't think. But, and this newspaper article, you know, there's stuff in here that is, was in closed session and is now public. It's not final yet. So, I don't believe it should be included in the newspaper yet. And I think that's why the argument has started, because closed information has been leaked. We have, in the same article, we have a quorum, you know, a possible sunshine violation because a quorum of email members was emailed. I mean, it says in here that we want to, you know, a list of reasons why they should vote down this amendment and that we... Now, I did not get the email, so I'm just going off of what the New Tribune reported. But they also requested that council vote this down. I mean, we've had several conversations, several meetings that says this should not be done, and it's being done. This is the reason why, I believe in my heart, that something needs to be in there that says, we can, as a council, we can do something if something's done wrong. The discipline actions, I'm going to ask, I think I know them, but I'm, you're going to have to correct me. We could take them off of committee chair. There's one big word that I, that's a slap on the wrist.
Century.
Century, but it's just, it just doesn't do anything. And the third one, remove them as a liaison. Yeah. So, I'll use myself as an example. If I gave confidential information out, and it was in a closed meeting, and all of you guys said, "Man, he should not be at the next closed meeting." All you could do is take me off of the liaison, of the HPC, and my other, you know, my liaison, because I'm not a committee chair, and you can slap me on the wrist. And I can do it again the next closed meeting, and I can do it again the next closed meeting, and I can do it again the next closed meeting. That's, I think that's all we're getting at here. We're not saying we're disclosing information, we're, we're hiding information. We do not want to, I mean, we've all talked about this. We do not want to hide information from anybody. There are certain things that need to be in closed session, that should stay in closed session. And if we're all talking about it in closed session, I don't think my comments, anybody else's comments should be, "We're saying it because it's in closed session. We're trying to come to an agreement so that we can make it public." But I think that's the reason why this conversation is getting talked about tonight, is that some things were leaked. And then, I, you know, that's all.
Congressman Allen?
Yeah, getting back to the newspaper article and all that, I was just funny. Why, why six of the nine of us, why, why wasn't we, why weren't we all included in that? I never got an email either to, for this discussion. Probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't answered it anyway, but I was just wondering what was the thought process and why three of us were, were not in, in, included in this. And so, that, Derek, you ran on a thing about transparency in your, in your campaign and all that. The lack of transparency on why three of us may not have been included, I've kind of, would do a inquiry if, if you would like to answer that. But you, you know from our conversations that we've had in closed session that we are looking at what's the best interest for the city. We have, I think, good debate. I don't think it gets overly heated, but we have a lot of good debate. Everybody's views are heard. And, you know, we come to a resolution of some sort out of that. So, I don't think we're, it just seems to me that the tone of the article in the paper was like, "We're, we're constantly trying to hide stuff from the public." And that is absolutely not the truth. Not much we can discuss about it. You know, it just, and, and the paper loves a, this paper loves to have conflict and all that. You know, they don't reach out and, and actually get a lot of the, the truth out of it. They get one-siders from one individual person. So, that this whole transparency thing, it kind of just sticks to my craw a little bit that, you know, for me, I think it has a slap that I'm trying to hide something from the people I care about and my family that lives here. And that's the furthest from the truth, and it's the furthest from who I am and, and ever have been. And so, I just, you know, if you would like to inquire about why three of us were left off of that, I would be glad to hear, hear your opinion or your voice of that.
Congressman Thomas?
So, let me start at the top. In our closed session, we discussed the need for confidentiality agreement with teeth. As has previously been stated by me, publicly, privately, and mea culpa, but I come out of an extensive private corporate atmosphere, and confidentiality agreements are as common as sliced white bread. It happens all the time. And so, my initial thought was, this is perfectly normal, perfectly acceptable, et cetera. To one of Shane's points, or Mr. Campeter's points, the Missouri Municipal League, I did, in fact, reach out to them the next morning because I assumed that, that this is a topic that's come out before in other public institutions. And as it turns out, the, the document that they sent was a copy of a confidentiality agreement that the city of Clark, Missouri put in place, that the MML was aware of. It was not a MML-endorsed ordinance, whatever. It was just something that they had on hand from 1983. Don't quote me on that number. And so, they were passing it off for whatever guidance that might be worth, which I did, in fact, pass on to Mr. Mullman, thinking that, you know, maybe this, to kind of answer the question. Well, I was replied that you want to look at, at other cities, kind of to, to Mr. Lickel's question. And there are, in fact, other cities that have passed confidentiality agreements. It's, it's not a foreign concept. That doesn't necessarily mean that it's a good one. As to the email and the number of people I sent it out to, I will testify truthfully that that went individually to members of the council. There is no anything stopping me or any of us from talking individually to each other about anything, communicating with each other about anything. So, there was no quorum violation there. So there was no quorum violation there. Why were three left out? Well, three were left out probably for the same reason that I know I have been, well, I assume, I'm sorry, I do not have any direct knowledge, that I have been left out of inter-council emails, for lack of a better term. So to some extent, if I think that I'm going to be barking up a dead tree, there's no point in barking. So you talk about the interest of the city, and you talk about transparency. Yes, I ran strongly on transparency, and I won my city council race by a pretty good margin, and the expectation of my Ward 2 residents is that I will stand up for them and bring them the information that we all need. And I can tell you that the general feeling out there amongst the residents, and I found this out in our public coffee chat that we had, I found it out in numerous phone calls, emails, texts that I've had in the last couple of weeks, that sadly, no, our residents have an element of distrust with the city council. And I aim to help alleviate that and bring it back to where people trust us and understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. Do we have difficult decisions to make? Heck, yes, we do. And that's our responsibility to make them as best that we know, in the best interest of our residents. And so I apologize for nothing that I have done here in this conversation today.
My questions directed at Councilman Thomas. You've been on the council since April, correct, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
During that time, do you feel that you ever participated in any activity that you felt wasn't shared with the public, or that was against that sunshine law, or in violation of the public trust?
To date, no.
Then why do you have a problem with a guardrail of accountability being put on this to continue to safeguard that trust? That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I just say that I think the discussion's great, but I think we need to not make it personal. I get that there was a newspaper article, but the reality is, we all have to make the decision, and I'd rather personally the questions be about the topic, because that's what, that's what's important, is the topic. And I do have one other question for you, Councilor. You talked about being unable, this is one other thing that, if you can look into, that I'm concerned about. You talked about not being able to consult with an outside attorney, but in another closed meeting, I asked you if we could consult with you, and you said, no, you'd have to consult with an outside attorney. So there's contradictions, and the reality is, I have a right to an attorney. And so that really concerns me, that there's contradictions in that. If you don't mind looking at that, that would be great.
Councilman.
I think something like an exception to this policy, where someone has retained an attorney, and there is a relationship of attorney-client confidentiality, I think that is worthy of consideration. This won't apply to situations where a city council member, you know, has an established attorney-client relationship and brings that to their private attorney. You know, we work on the wordsmithing course. I'm having a hard time having a problem with that. I think it just needs to be spelled out, and so that way there's no question. And also, you know, make sure that it's an actual attorney-client relationship, and not, well, you know, my buddy's an attorney, so I can talk to him. So I think that's a valid question. I will say, like I responded earlier, sunshine law provides some protections to elected officials when they consult with a city attorney that aren't available when they consult with their own private attorney. So that's really the only distinction, but if that's something that the city council wanted to consider as an amendment to this, or, you know, something like that, I'm having a hard time tying your reasons together.
Well, and to be honest, I have consulted with a private attorney, because I feel like that's important for me. So, you know, I guess prosecute me, but I just want to say that I think that's just important for us to look at. And the other thing is, censure is a big deal. I can guarantee you, every one of us will fight tooth and nail before we're censored, because that's a public thing, and that tells the public that the majority of us have thought that there was enough to censor somebody. I'm telling you, it would have forgotten me, if I thought that I was going to be potentially censored. So it is, I think it is a big deal, much bigger than what we think it is. So I do, I do think it's a lot bigger, so that's just my feedback on that. But that's all I plan on saying tonight, I think. Thank you.
I was just going to say. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Regularly, we get an opinion from another attorney. And sometimes it's because of their expertise, sometimes it's to make sure that we're on the right track, but I thought the distinction I was hearing about that discussion is, there's a difference between a council member getting consulted by their private attorney and the council hiring another attorney to give them their opinion. So I'm kind of hearing two different things, and I'm trying to figure out. We regularly say, hey, it's in the city's best interest as a council. They say, let's, let's have another attorney look at this, or let's hire Gilmore Bell, or let's do this. That's not uncommon. And if a council feels like they need to make sure that they've got, whatever the issue is, locked in and straight, they can always say, we want to get another attorney's opinion. Right?
Correct.
Okay. But the distinction that I think they're talking about is, if they have personal concerns about something that's happening, can they talk to their attorney? And I don't think we can limit that.
It's, I, it is a fine line, I think.
But I think you're talking about two different things. One is council.
I think, I think we're on the same page. We're talking about.
But I don't know if everybody here understands that.
Individual council members consulting their private attorneys. I think having an exception that would allow for that is, and just spell that out very, very clearly, I think that makes a lot of sense. So as opposed to leaving it gray, I think it makes a lot of sense to have a exception.
I just want to make sure the council realizes, there's a difference between a council-hired, second-opinion attorney, and an individual seeking out their own attorney for what's in their best interest, whatever the issue is. I just want to make sure everybody understands, there's a couple of different things.
Yeah, so the last thing I'm trying to say, I guess, is, unless, like, everybody's changed overnight, we've all had a discussion that there needs to be some type of protection on closed information. Again, it may scare you, but it's happened twice now in the last month, so it's not scaring people, or we're just not threatening them enough to stop it, one of the two, is all. So, I mean, that's the only reason I thought it was brought up, is because this is happening, and the only way we thought to stop it from happening was to try to put some disciplinary actions on a closed session. If that's not the way you want to go, then I think we need to start using our very small disciplinary action and scaring people, and see if that works.
Just hearing from our counselor, can I make an amendment to the bill? I am sponsoring, or does that have to come from another? So to keep this, so I understand Councilman Allen's concern on that. The amendment would be to allow a councilman, councilperson, whatever the wording has to be there, they feel the need to obtain a paid attorney-client privilege of attorney, I don't even know how to word that, that it is deemable for that councilperson or councilwoman to consult with a private attorney? And I have to leave it there. I don't, I don't know if you know the gist of what I've.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Did you get an answer to your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's the amendment I would propose. However, I need to, did I need to write it down, or?
So this is first reading. So generally, when, when council wants amendments to a bill, at first reading, the motion would be an instruction to the city administrator to draft language, bring it back as a substitute of the other next. Yeah, that's what I was trying to get at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real brief, I seconded this comment to council a couple of weeks ago, mainly their, their only reason was that having following in the last year and a half, being involved, undoubtedly there has been, I'm going to use the word inappropriate disclosure of closed in the past. Undoubtedly, there will be some in the future. I believe that, and this is my belief, I'm certainly not a litigant person, but in order to have the best outcome, in this case for our city, you have to have open, candid, honest conversation. And that area over there, to me, I've felt that it should be almost looked at as a sanctuary of safeness for our members to be able to differ among our peers in ways that are professional, responsible, accountable, and why I support it, the legislation that's before us, or will be before us next meeting for a vote. Because we, we do have to have those conversations and share, because people have a lot of varying opinions and thoughts, and all important to get where we need to go. My worry, and after thinking about this the last couple of weeks, is if we can assume that there's been inappropriate release of information, or sharing of information, and there may be, most likely would be in the future, and we've got a document that maybe with that amendment might square it a little, but how do we make sure, or can we even ensure fair implementation of this document? Because it's fairly vague, it doesn't give specific examples, it gives the power to the council, which is, you know, the way it is. But we also, to give guardrails to ourselves, we also need to give examples and guidance to ourselves, because one council may think something's not as important, whereas another one may think so, may think that one would be very important. And how do you apply it evenly, fairly, is going to be a great challenge. And while you don't want to back yourself into a corner where you can't handle scenarios that were unpredictable, how best to apply fairness and the same like-mindedness even among different sets of councils? And it changes, or can change, every year. That's where my struggle is. Thank you.
In the last, I would say, week, we've had Ward 2 constituents reach out, and they first kind of prefaced with a conversation about how much they value transparency, and then they, they want to talk about this bill, and they find a lot of concerns with the bill. They, they find from maybe one individual from their past experiences that they think this bill could potentially have uses that wouldn't be the use described tonight. And so as, as a council member, I take into account the constituents that have reached out with me with concerns and asking me to vote against this bill. And then just one kind of personal observation that Councilmember, Councilmember Allen alluded to earlier tonight with the yard waste, I guess I'll be the third person that came up in the paper, too. Not for me. When, when we voted in closed session to open the vote that, that was to eliminate yard waste services in Jefferson City altogether, get rid of it, we didn't go into closed session with, with that note as the closure to that meeting. And fortunately, the council at that time, and the reason I can talk about it to you tonight, is because the council at that time voted to release that vote and make it public. Had that council not released that vote to make that, that vote public about removing those services that were critical to a lot of our residents, I couldn't have went to any Ward 2 resident and talked to them about it. And I struggle with that, and it, it's really, Mr. Mulman alluded to tonight, an opportunity to get around that. He said, well, if you feel like something has been inadvertently, wrongfully, you know, mistake, whatever, closed, there is a process to go to the Missouri Attorney General's office to ask them to review that. Well, that process hasn't really happened. So, or it could be, or it couldn't be, I don't know, but, but let's assume that that doesn't work. I'm left in a position where the city official, city administration's opinion is that this is closed. I know it's not closed, but I'm in a real struggle with my constituents to, to provide critical information to them so that they can advocate to me and whoever else they want to advocate to on something like this. So, so I would, I would strongly caution a rewording, revision, something with this bill to provide a lot of safeguards for, for things like mistakes. We're all human, and we don't want to, we don't want to put somebody up on the pedestal from a hunch. We don't want to accuse somebody for something without information. And I, I really don't want to see the city get in a position where, where there's a council who might want to do something that, that isn't the basis of, of what the, the heart of, of the concern is. The other thing I have a little bit of a concern about, and I'm, I'm not a legal expert on this particular item, but if I would get in trouble for releasing a confidential record, and council would decide that I need to spend two council meetings out of closed meetings, like, I'm not going to closed meetings, my Ward 2 constituents don't have representation, or they have half of their representation in that meeting, not by anything that they've done, but by something that I've done. And, and I, I do worry about that a little bit, too, that you could get to a position where you may have, you may have things coming up, and a number of individuals not in closed you may have things coming up, and, and a number of individuals not in closed session meetings, and, and how, how those citizens are represented in those meetings is just a thought I've had. So, thanks.
I just have a question of our legal, our attorney. I'm not sure I understood that comment. My understanding is that you are indicating, the council's going to decide whether this thing goes up or down. I'm arguing that at a point in time, this council, ten zero, voted to go into closed session to discuss an issue. What I thought I heard you say was, if someone felt like that wasn't a closed issue, that was the time to say, "Hey, this is not a closed issue." Once going in the room, and once the issue's discussed, if someone felt like, "Hey, this is not a closed issue", that would be a really good time to say, "I'm not comfortable this is a closed issue. I'm not voting on it." When you come out of there with a recommendation, and no one has indicated that I'm uncomfortable, I cast my vote. And then nine other people depend on your integrity to live up to the commitment you made, and then it goes out, and it's not lived up. Aren't there checkpoints along the way that people can say, "I'm not comfortable this is a closed issue", and don't vote for it? At the point you vote for it, I know when I was on council, I trusted the other nine people I worked with that they're, what was their bond? Is that not accurate?
There are certainly checkpoints.
I don't know your point of view. Mr. Crane?
I just, I just want to make it clear, because we've heard about this yard waste issue a few times. City staff, city administration requested the closed session to talk about bids received. A council member, not city administration, city administration never asked for any vote to disband or to quit yard waste. So I take a little bit of offense when we say city administration like it was some strategy-driven thing. It wasn't. Anybody that was in that room knows how that went down. We never asked for them to make that motion. We never recommended it. It happened because the council decided to make the motion and vote. We were there to talk about bids received.
Do you remember it that way, Mike?
Yes, but, but it was inappropriate, and then during the closed session, that was not brought up, that it was inappropriate.
Yep. And that's on, that's on council and, and on staff, that that was not brought up as inappropriate.
People that, when you make your vote, people have got to, in my opinion, depend on you making the best decision you can on the information you have. And if you go outside that room and change it, I'm not saying you, I'm talking to somebody. Go ahead.
It's just, it says, yeah, but you voted, and, and you, and no matter what, how you voted, in that case, I was on the, in the vote, but still it's closed, so I, I can't say anything, you know, about it. Except that we allowed afterwards to release a vote. But, but the fact is, it, it was inappropriate to even vote on that. And that, that discussion we didn't even have, unfortunately.
Campeter? One, one final thing, and this is just to help me out. Question for you, Ryan. I know you've- I think you've said it, I know you've said it, but I want to hear it again. As transparency, I want everybody to hear it. Your recommendation is if we are going to email the same thing to more than one person or a quorum, then we need to CC the city clerk, or we're playing with fire.
I think that's best practice. I think that's best practice.
Okay.
How old is he?
So I have a, a motion to make an amendment. I did not get a second. Are we-
Second.
Discussing?
There's two weeks if you want to do a substitute work with, and to get the language correct. It's going to be hard to figure it out.
That's the direction I was looking for, but that's why I voted that to you.
That's right about that, what I needed to do. Thank you.
Can the rest of us work with? Because there are-
Just if you're emailing, do it one at a time.
There are some, like I said, there's some other concerns related to interference.
Happy to have those discussions.
Honestly, it, what we've got is too complicated. And there are, is a trust issue. I mean, the reality is, we there is a trust issue that we will all be upright and do the right thing. We'll get something like this on, on the books. I'm not saying for you all especially, but, you know, to be honest with you, I've been on the council, you know, a year ago. I'd be like, there's no way I'm going to be, that's going to happen. I'm not going to support that because of my trust issue. So, you know, I don't know what to do about that, but I do think there can be various kinds of actors that can be part of the council, that can actually, could cause a real problem with that. So, in my opinion, it needs to be very simple, simplified, but I'll work with you.
On Housleton?
To be fair, the enforcement mechanism of this bill is very slow-moving and very heavy. It requires a trial, it requires us to agree. So, whenever it comes to that, if we really believe that one of us is at fault for compromising closed information, we're pretty darn sure, we're pretty darn sure, we're pretty darn confident we're going to go that route. Because along with that comes a ton of other consequences. So I don't think that we'd be walking down this road unless we were certain about what we were talking about. That's why I think as it's written, it's actually workable. It's intended to be heavy lifting. It's intended to be slow. It's intended to be impactful. Because if we're going to use it, we're darn sure about it.
Just one more question from Mr. Moleman. There was a recommendation on a policy. We do not have a policy in place. There have been activities, it's kind of like the Wild West right now. What would be your suggestion to council on how we address issues for two weeks? If you don't want to answer it, that's fine. We can move on to the next item.
Be, be, be a good public servant. That's, that's all I can, that's all I can suggest. Do a job and serve the good people of Jefferson City. Be a good public servant. Confines of the council structure. People of Jefferson City, set up a structure with the present of you. Positions together. That's my suggestion.
Seeing no other hands, we move 2025-031.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sweeten Sealing Services LLC in the amount of $178,754.72 cents for the crack sealed project.
There is a request from Mr. Bremer, who is not here tonight for a check mark. Councilman, did you-
Have a request to suspend the rules.
Any opposition to suspension of the rules? And we'll ask the clerk to read it again, then we'll ask Mr. Bang to talk.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sweeten Sealing Services LLC in the amount of $178,754.72 cents for the crack sealed project.
You now have 2025-031 on the table for discussion. Mr. Bang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is, it would be a contract to allow a crack sealing contract, which is a part of a cooperative agreement that was bid by a different municipality. But ultimately, it would provide for the crack sealing of asphalt streets, basically that had been overlaid in between 2019 and 2022. Essentially, what we're trying to do is extend our street pavements, you know, kind of, you've seen the curve. Basically, a street pavement will stay very good for quite a while and drop off relatively rapidly. So, we're trying to catch those streets before they fall off the curve. And so, this crack sealing project on recently overlaid streets will allow us to do that. So, it's preventative maintenance that will prevent us from spending additional funds overlaying streets and keep those pavements in good shape for longer. It'll pay, it'll, will provide for the crack sealing of about 20 miles of street ultimately. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman, this went through your committee last week. I'll give you, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to say? I think it came out of there unanimous.
Yes, it came out unanimous, and I believe it extends the life at least five years. Is that the-
Yes.
And this was a multi, I mean, you all told us in 2022, this would be the best policy three years in the future. And we're now three years in the future. How to protect the money we invested back in 2022?
Right. It certainly provides for a, a longer life for those streets and better condition overall.
So just real quick, is this the crack seal we've talked about in the past? Or is this a new technology for whole streets?
It's a, it's a technology that's been around for quite some time. It's basically a hot tar mix is, the cracks in the street are blown out or otherwise cleaned, and then a hot tar is basically put in those cracks to prevent water from intruding into the pavement. So basically, it's just a preventative measure, keep the water from getting in and then expanding and popping the asphalt.
Okay, so I may reach out to you afterwards, because I think I had made an inquiry about a street. I think Brian, you were involved in that, too, copied on that. So I just want to make sure that we are consistent with what we told them about the, about the ability to extend the life. And the other thing I just want to say is I appreciate your work on this, because streets are important. I know to mine and councilmen like, and many others' residents, so I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you. I think your initial discussion answered a question of mine, but I emailed some questions earlier today. And I don't know that I put everything in my email I needed to put in there to make it make sense, but it sounds like, because what I was getting hung up on was Exhibit A in this packet that, that lists these streets with a date of 2019 through 2022. So what this is, sounds like it is, is these were streets identified back at some time in the past that would be ready for crack sealing currently, right now.
Correct. So we haven't had a crack sealing project in a number of years. I think probably eight years ago was probably the last time we had a crack sealing project. And so, what this is doing is going back to streets that we've overlaid in that, that period of years, which are all streets that we believe would be benefit, you know, would benefit from crack sealing. And so we're, we're basically taking them all in a, in one lump, simply because we haven't done a crack sealing project in a number of years.
That makes complete sense, so thank you for that information. So these, these streets, my follow-up question, which is relevant now, I think, that these streets wouldn't be on any sort of overlay list for the next coming five years, whatever, so, yeah. I got to say thanks to everybody here. I mean, crack sealing's a big deal, and we're doing it. Thank you all. I know, I like crack sealing.
Councilman Campeter?
And I think just to clarify some, one thing that came out of our committee was, so this is like the second step. The first step is the year after the overlay is the gravel and whatever.
Right. It's basically, it's a sealer, and then ultimately spread sand on that, so.
I think that's what you were getting, yeah. The chip and seal.
It's not a chip and seal. It's actually just a, a seal core.
I think that's what you were getting at, right? So we have that first phase that we're trying to protect, and then within three years of the first overlay, then we do this. So now we're extending it kind of times two.
Correct.
Or times five each time, or five and three, whatever, but we're doing two things to extend that life.
I forgot one question. What, I think, like, fall is the, the prime that this is done because of moisture content, those types of things.
Right. So what you're trying to do is catch the pavement at a time, because pavement is expanding and contracting, you know, in, you know, during the heat, it's, it's, you know, expanded, and when it's cool, it's contracted. And so the, the cracks are the largest when it's cold, and the narrowest when it's hot. And so what you want to do is try to put the sealant in the crack when it's about halfway, you know, so that, because the, the sealant is actually, it expands and contracts itself. So if you put it in at that point in time, which is usually fall, because it's usually less rainy in the fall, and then you also have those temperatures which are kind of in the middle. So you want to be able to put enough sealant in that crack, so when it, when it is cold and that crack expands, the material is still able to expand with the crack. But then you don't want it so much material in there that when summer comes and it, and it just compresses all out and, you know, kind of creates a lump in the pavement. So you want to hit it in that middle, middle time.
Thank you very much for the information.
All right, seeing no other comments, you have 2025-031 in front of you for roll call.
Allen?
Hi.
Housleton?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Phil passes.
All right, bill pending, 2025-026.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $259,931 agreement with Schneider's Excavating Company for the Streambank Stabilization Tributary to Graves Creek Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, this contract would allow us to make some repairs to some exposed sewer lines along our Wears Creek basin. So there was a new sanitary sewer line that was installed a number of years ago. And in the course of time, the creek has eroded, I think in three separate places, and is threatening to expose that sewer line. And so in order to protect it into the future, we're looking at armoring the banks of, of those areas in order to protect the sewer line. I'd be happy to answer any questions both of you.
Seeing none, you have 2025-026 in front of you for roll call.
Paul Breton? Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Phil passes.
2025-027.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Bang, you're there keeping your business.
Mr. Mayor, so this would be a, a bill that would accept the, the operating assistance grant with MoDOT. So basically, there are operating funds that we receive from MoDOT for our transit operations. There's a 50% match for those funds, but ultimately it provides for the services of our transit division. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, you have 2025-027 in front of you.
Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Allen?
Hi.
Housleton? Phil passes.
Okay, 2025-028, took care of up under the public hearings. And then Councilman Michael with 2025-029 on the informal. There'll be a public hearing on September 2nd. Is that accurate? For that, so.
It's Thursday.
The third or second? We moved it one day.
It's Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday. There were Tuesday.
Next meeting. Calendar none, resolutions, resolution 2025-19.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for $53,350 to preserve-
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for 5335 to preserve funds for future purchase of a fixed route bus.
Councilman?
You've approved the resolution?
Your motion is second. Mr. Bang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this would allow us to apply grant funding for future bus purchases. The, the funding comes on a yearly basis, and we are needing to allocate that funding to this specific purpose, or otherwise that money could potentially lapse. And so this, again, would allow us to capture funds from 2022 and 2033, and together with the funds that we would receive in 24 and 25, would allow us to purchase buses in the future. And so applying for this now will preserve that money from, from lapsing for lack of a use. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Seeing none. You have resolution 2025 dash 19 in front of you.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi.
Puzzleton? Joe?
Hi.
Resolution is adopted.
All right. 20, resolution 2025 dash 20.
A resolution of the council of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing certain actions relating to the proposed redevelopment project under the statute of downtown revitalization preservation program.
Councilman Allers?
Yes, I'd like to move this bill, this resolution to the city council for review.
Second.
Second.
All right. Your motion is second. Mr. Moll?
Thank you. So this resolution would authorize city staff and its consultants to undertake necessary activities, pursue a series of tax incentives for the City Council Conference Center project. Specifically, the incentive programs that we are looking at are the state's downtown revitalization preservation program, and then community improvement district, transportation development district, and port improvement district. So this is just to start the actions. All final actions regarding these incentives would come back to the city council. This is essentially just saying to staff, go ahead, move forward, spend some funds, and start making necessary preparations to line up these incentives on a timeline that, you know, that, that makes it possible to close with these incentives in place. Because putting these incentives in place is a prerequisite to closing. You cannot close any type of financing until these are put in place. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Neely, then.
Thank you. Just for a moment, the fiscal information here doesn't allude to a cost, necessarily, the, where the, the costs would come from. And I assume part of that is because it's probably pretty unclear what the exact cost would be.
Yeah.
But could you give us an idea?
Sure thing. So Gilmore and Bell, who is our special economic development council, most of the heavy lifting on this, probably a vast majority of the work of this resolution would be undertaken by them. So I reached out to them. And so what they said is that they think that over the next nine months, that, which is kind of the anticipated timeline to get these all in place, that their bills would probably be between $50,000 and $100,000. So they're providing a variety of services to us on this project. They think about half of that would be directly related to these incentives. So the estimate, I guess, is probably $25,000 to $50,000 to pursue these four programs.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Did you mention it's lodging tax laws?
Yes. But, yeah, so, and these are lodging taxes set forth.
Do you all happen to know if, if any organization or anything that this impacts, like, had any managerial type votes on this, or? I guess, like, so you're downtown district incentives, you know, organizations, how, how would they, would they, I guess, if they want to support or oppose a Cid, when would that, when would their supporter opposition come into play in this process?
So I'm shooting from the hip just a little bit here, so please forgive me. Just for example, a Cid is, the petition has to be approved by the city council.
Okay.
And so, and so there's always the opportunity to make comment on ordinances that are referred to the city council. And then, this is what I'm shooting from the hip on, I believe that the Cid statute actually requires a public hearing, like, formal public hearing as well. And so, you know, that is the, that is the opportunity that is contemplated by the, by the statute. And so I believe, I believe it's similar for the TDD. The Port Improvement District is something new to this. I don't think I can speak confidently on that one, on the process. And then the state process is, a state process, I don't know, I have an answer on that as well. But definitely the CID and the TDD are both items that would have to be approved by the city council. So all the regular type of opportunities to make comment, plus some opportunities for public hearings as well.
And based on the date you gave, it sounds like a Cid, a Tid, or a, the port would, would potentially circle back around to camp, to council in three months?
Uh, it might be a little bit longer than that. I, I think the timeline that we've seen is, is maybe looking closer maybe to end of the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Five months.
Yeah.
Now on then, Councilman Thompson.
Thanks for the information. I know I've talked to several of you about this. And usually when we do something related to the conference center, I'll either get people reach out before or after. And so what I want to say is, first of all, rest assured, there will be plenty of opportunity for you to hear more about these and for the council to consider them. This is starting the process, which is necessary for financing. And as we go down the road for the conference center, that is what we need to do, is continue going down this road for the financing of the conference center. But I just want to assure everybody that many of us on the council, I think all the council, are, are very engaged in this. And we will, just through the process, have plenty of opportunity for people to hear more about these and for the council to consider. So that's it. Thanks.
Councilman Thomas, then Councilman Campeter?
So in the background information that came with this, it says that the documents will require the approval of the city council by passage of an ordinance. But in the actual resolution, the very last sentence says the mayor and city manager are authorized and directed to execute such that may be necessary or desirable, et cetera. It seems, seems like one controversy the other. Is the, is the resolution language correct, or is the background language correct?
They're both correct. So, so the, the resolution language is, is boilerplate, basically saying, you know, if, if the city needs to sign an application, then the mayor or, or city administrator would be op, would have the opportunity to do that. But the final decision comes to the city council. So, so the language in the resolution is to address the need for execution of processed and ministerial type documents. Final decisions go to the city. Now, now, one kind of caveat to that is the Port Improvement District, the ultimate decision on the Port Improvement District tax lies with the port.
Thank you. And then I'm, I'm cursed with having been an English major. There's a typo in section one, the second of the last sentence. It just says following a duly noticed public held. So.
Second last sentence of section one. No. We'll get that fixed as a script.
I thought you would. Thank you, Mr. Moll.
Campeter?
I just want to clarify that these tax incentives are only for the development, not the surrounding areas.
Yes.
So, I mean, yes, people can say what, you know, if they like it or not, but it's not affecting them at all. It's affecting just the businesses inside the new development.
All right. Good. Resolution 2025 dash 20 in front of you.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi.
Puzzleton?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Resolution is adopted.
Got a guy smiling in the back. We finally got to his. Resolution 2025 dash 21.
A resolution authorizing the city clerk and mayor to enter into a funding agreement with United Capital City Athletics.
Councilman Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very much would like to haul through on a promise we made to this project and write a check for $100,000 to that.
Anybody like the second? Thank you very much. All right. Let me get back on track here. Mr. Moll?
Thank you. So this would approve an agreement with United Capital City Athletic Club to provide them funding in the amount of $100,000 out of the city's non-ARPA funding. City originally allocated this money to this project back in 2001, I believe.
20.
What's that? Sorry, 2021.
Yeah, I know, dude.
College in 2021. So if this, if this agreement looks familiar, it's basically the same agreement that we did with Lincoln University for their security services, sciences facility as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Moll, Ellen? Did you ever hand it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Other than just, this is really great. I'm very excited about it.
I just want to thank the gentleman for sitting through almost two hours, well, more than two hours. And I'm, I'm very supportive. This is great for the, the youth and the city. There's, I can't think of a single negative here. So anyway, thank you.
All right.
Thank you guys for taking me out of the heat to act the T S.
No charge.
Anytime.
All right. You have resolution 2025 dash 21 in front of you for roll call.
Michael?
Hi.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Allers?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi.
Puzzleton?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Resolution is adopted.
And resolution 2025 dash 22.
A resolution authorizing the city to execute a contract with Clarkston Nelson LLC for legislative consultant services.
Mr. Moll?
Thank you. This resolution would approve a contract with Clarkson Nelson LLC for slave consultant services, also known as lobbying services. City has had a lobbyist, professional lobbyist on retainer for many, many years. And so after a competitive process and evaluation by a scoring committee, a scoring committee has selected Clark Nelson, sort of as the city's lobbyist for the next five years. Can I ask you a question?
Allers, I jumped over you. Do you want to get this on the table?
Yes, sir. I'd move to move this resolution on the table.
Second. Second. All right. Now it's open for discussion.
Um, just a couple of things. I know I asked, just so that people know, that this is coming from the city's non-department general fund, and then the lobbyists report to the city administrator. But can you talk a little bit about, one is, have we worked with Clarkston Nelson before? They're brand new to us?
Not, not in any official capacity that I'm aware of.
So what's, tell me a little bit about, for the public, what's the value of having a legislative consultant that we can't do on our own, if you don't mind speaking of that, just briefly?
I address that, or you want to address it? It's a wild scene over at the Capitol right now. I mean, we need someone over there all the time looking out for the city and being more aggressive. And one of the things we looked at as we went through, I mean, there's not a bad lobbyist on this list. They're all capable of doing our work. The thing that appealed as, as we were going through, at least from my input into it, is Clarkson Nelson. I mean, they have been around for a long time. Mr. Nelson ran OA under the Nixon administration. He knows the budget process, and that's what we need. I mean, we, we found out this year, we've got to be, as a city, more aggressive. Mr. Clarkson has worked for several, he worked for Harry Gallagher, who is one of the most respected lobbyists in the Capitol. But we've got to have someone there every day looking out for the city. Missouri Municipal League does an amazing job of flagging city-related things, but we need a lobbyist there, working with legislators, keeping them on track. I mean, we found out, and we had small-town legislators from around Missouri poking at parking in the capital city. And these guys are very credible to be able to go and, and take that on as soon as they hear it. Also, Mike Henderson, who works with them, ran the Missouri Insurance Commission. They are all top-notch lobbyists, and to get them at this price is a bargain.
Thank you. I know.
Mr. Crane?
I'm just going to add, what's really important, and we have great relationships with our representatives and senators, and we see them all the time, and we communicate with them all the time. We have great working relationships. But from the legislative component, it's important, like the mayor said, to build relationships with all representatives and all senators. And that's really what the lobbyists have done, is they have a lot of resources that we just don't have the time to do. It's, you know, for, for us to do our full-time job and try to build relationships with, you know, what is it?
197?
197 is really tough. And, and that's one component of the job. But what I would say from, from a staff perspective, what's, what's some of the most important things is not just the bills that are introduced, and making sure you're on the right side of those, and, and sometimes defeating bills that aren't good. But the interactions with our departments at the state of Missouri is really important, and to have those relationships built already that we have access to is really important. And then the appropriations, like the mayor alluded to, making sure that those appropriations that were thought of as well, that we're doing everything we can to either stay in there or get in there. But those administrative departments are just really important. We have a lot of interactions we have with the state of Missouri. OA is obviously a big one, since we have so many assets that are state assets in our community that's different than most communities. And we really are focused on making sure that any decision that needs to be made, we're getting in touch with the right department and the right person in that department. And sometimes having, having a lot of those relationships built help guide us through that process. So I've seen just as much success working with representatives that, through our lobbyists as, as the legislature and the ministers.
Thanks. I appreciate it. I, I actually do know these gentlemen, and, and I know they'll do a great job. And someone who's pretty fiscally conservative, you know, I like to squeeze every dollar. I, I agree, this is really important. So just wanted to hear you all talk about it.
Seeing no other comments. You have resolution 2025 dash 22 in front of you.
Neely?
Hi.
Thomas?
Hi.
Young?
Hi.
Allers?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi.
Puzzleton?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Campeter?
Hi.
Lester?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Resolution's adopted.
I would just make one additional comment. Mrs. Doctorian did an amazing job for the city, but she prefers to work on the policy side, not so much on the dollar side, the money side. So she kind of self-exempted herself out because we aggressively wanted to go toward the financial side as well. So I think she's done a great job watching some very important bills and work very closely with, with Mr. Crane and Mr. Mollman. Resolution 2025 dash 23.
Supporting the CDBGDR light tech applications for Moro Valley.
Supporting the CDBGDR light tech applications for Moro Valley housing development.
This resolution?
Second. You have another person that has been patiently waiting.
I didn't know that too much.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'll turn over Mr. West here, uh, really quickly, just to have a brief overview. The city recently put out an RFP, uh, for applications for projects to, uh, to develop block grant disaster relief, uh, recovery funds from the city, and also leverage that with light tech applications. And we received two requests from, uh, Mr. West, and he's going to go through these uh, real quick. And then, uh, these are actually two separate resolutions, but the resolutions of support are necessary for that application process, so I'll turn over it.
If everybody's comfortable, are, are yous going to go through both of them?
If that's okay with you, I would do that.
Yeah, that's fine, then we can go back.
And if you got any questions for either one, we can go back and do that.
Thanks for being here.
Well, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council. I appreciate everybody having me here. Uh, as I said, I'm here on behalf of two separate developments, Moro Valley. Uh, I'm on behalf of FLW LLC, and then the Jefferson City Rapid Abuse Crisis Services. We've partnered together to bring this development to Jeff City. Uh, the second application I'll be explaining about is, uh, for West Green Enterprises LLC, and that is on a preservation slash new construction of an existing apartment complex here in Jefferson City's West End Cedar Ridge Apartments. Before I get too far into it, I just want to take one moment real quick. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that housing conference you got, or town hall you had on Friday, and I just wanted to give my compliment and thanks to the city council, city staff, for the amount of work that, uh, we as a community have worked on this housing issue over the last few years. Uh, it's quite a different environment, it seems like, from 2022, so appreciate all that. I appreciate everybody, uh, putting up with me talking about housing on that, so. Anyway, uh, as, as I mentioned, RACs will be a partner on Moro Valley. Um, they are also going to be our lead referral agent and our service provider, and this is going to be a 48-unit new construction site on, it's the big one forward?
Yes.
Not very big up there, but this is located off of Shot Hill Wood, Shot Hill Wood Drive Road. Um, the site is right there next to the news tribunes distribution center and the county employee retirement something. Um, nearby, within walking distance, right there, is Eastland Plaza. There's gerbs, several stores, gas stations, eateries, diners, uh, that'll have, you know, services within walking distance of this development. In addition to that, uh, being services plus employment opportunities, but it's also about three miles away from the Agua Industrial District. We're all, we have major manufacturing down there. Uh, they who, I know that they're really looking forward to some housing being built in that area. Uh, this is going to be a mixed-use development, meaning we're going to have, uh, rents at different levels. Uh, with RACs being part of our, uh, referral agency, we're going to have eight set-aside units for them, and those are going to be set at the 30% AMI, or the lowest level of rent. Two bedrooms is going to be 525, and a three-bedroom will be 585. The majority of our units are going to be affordable workforce housing at the 60% AMI, and those are going to rent for 755 and 905, uh, respectively, on the two and three bedrooms. And then we'll have a couple market rate units of each, and the two-bedroom will be 1,050 and three-bedroom 1150. So, this is a map of current light tech properties, uh, tax credit properties in Jefferson City. You can see over here about where our location would be. There is none, so we're in the east side of Jeff City, and that whole industrial district where there's lots of employees. Since we're going to talk about both at once, this little dot right there is Cedar Ridge. Uh, I would note on that one, with its location on the map, I believe Modi had mentioned they were going to expand and bring in 200 employees, and they're right next door to our Cedar Ridge location. Site plan for Moro Valley, we purchased a hole, it's about six and a half, seven acres approximately. Uh, beginning with this current phase, we would construct 48 units on the front side of the property off Shot Hill Wood Drive, and we leave the back open, uh, for future development in the future if needed, if desired. Uh, but we would have back, oh, shoot, I hit the wrong button. Likely didn't move on me. Right here, kind of the middle of the property, but it's going to be the back of Phase One, is a community building and playground area. This is just a letter from City Zoning saying this is consistent with the zoning and the city's comprehensive plan. We have started the environmental review process on this one, which is, uh, necessary for disaster relief funds. Phase One is done of the environmental review, and we're currently going through the section 106, which I'm told is, I got a four-month process, should be done early November, or late November to early 2026. So, this is basically the exact same, uh, plan that we came to last year. We got an anonymous approval on. Uh, the only difference is we changed the unit mix-up. As we were finishing last year's application up, uh, through this past 12 months, we've inundated, it's probably too strong of a word, but we've had several calls for three-bedroom apartments, and they're just not available. So, uh, this year, instead of being 24 three-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms, we're going to do 36 three-bedrooms, 12 two-bedrooms. Still 48 units total, but just switched to mix-up a little bit. Um, I say that because we were actually trying to not get the buildings to get much bigger, so we were going to reduce the square footage, but that kind of messed with our kitchen design, so we stuck with the original that we liked. Nice big kitchen, open into the living room. Spare bedroom with a full bath across the hall, and then the master suite with a walk-in, uh, bathroom and a walk-in closet. And the three-bedrooms, very similar, just an extra bedroom. Building floor plan, uh, this would be the building that would have, uh, 12 three-bedrooms and 12 two-bedrooms, the two-bedrooms are in the center. Uh, the only difference between this and the second building is that center section would have the extra bedrooms in it for the additional three-bedrooms that we added this year. And the building elevation, how it look when it's finished? Lastly, uh, we'll be building that community building I pointed out. Uh, it's going to have space for, obviously, our leasing office and maintenance staff, but then it's also got the community room that will be available for RACs to work with residents on any sort of services or classes they want to hold at the property, as well as, uh, private office space for them to meet with clients in. So, that is Moro Valley, and I will keep going if we don't have any questions off the top of our heads.
Ken Peter?
Cedar Ridge, uh, preservation, new construction. Uh, as I mentioned, this is located on the west side of town. Uh, you can kind of see Highway 50 there, it's right off Old Lowman, uh, Big Horn Drive, one of our current buildings there. This is a future site plan. Those buildings, I keep it that way. These buildings right here were the original, they were built in 1997, Phase One. It's 48 units, uh, 42 bedrooms and eight three-bedrooms. Phase Two was in, uh, broke ground in 99. It's those three buildings right there, and that retention pond, uh, that is 24 units, all three bedrooms. Those 72, we plan on rehabbing, and then we also are submitted with our application to construction of two additional buildings, another 24 units. Here are just some current photos. I think, actually, most of the councils had the opportunity to go out and tour Cedar Ridge. I know we've got a few new members that haven't had that chance yet, but, so, probably a lot of this looks familiar, but just wanted to have a few pictures to show what a 30-year-old light tech property looks like that's managed correctly, uh, still in really good shape. But we would go through, have all the bricks inspected, any tuck work, tuck pointing or masonry work that need to be done, that would all be repaired during this rehab. The vinyl siding will be coming off, and it'll be replaced with, uh, fiber cement siding boards. Uh, these decks that are on there, they look like they're in pretty good shape, but they're getting weathered, being 30 years old, so we're going to tear off all the decks, put new decks on, new breezeways. And the backs of the buildings, which I pictured, uh, they're all vinyl siding, so that would all be replaced with that same composite siding. That's just a couple other pictures of theirs. Again, same thing with this, and the siding, you can see kind of in the lower corner here, there's some concrete deterioration. We'd have an engineer go through, look at all the parking lots, anywhere where the bad concrete, I'd be sawed out and report. This is probably the biggest change that's going to happen for the current units, and it's in Cedar Ridge One, and our two bedrooms. And it's hard to see on this old 30-year-old schematic I found, but can't really tell the pitch design there, but the pitches are pretty tiny, not a good design. They've got a lot of cabinet space, but they only have one drawer. So, not very useful. So, we are going to go in, tear out all that, get a nice new kitchen design over here, where it's a nice open space right into the living room, plenty of more cabinets, drawers. Um, other than not, not really changing anything to the floor plan, but update everything with new doors, new windows, HVAC systems, flooring, light fixtures, or basically everything will be, we're not going down to the bones, the studs, we're keeping the drywall, but everything else is out and in with new. Three-bedroom, uh, its kitchen wasn't quite as bad at Cedar Ridge One, a little bit more space there, so basically keeping the same floor plan, and again, everything will be new going in there. Our Cedar Ridge Two units, the three bedrooms, these are actually a very nice floor plan, very spacious, so not changing anything on that, just going in, new flooring, uh, counter, cabinets, countertop appliances, everything else will be new in there. And then this would be the floor plan for the 24 units, new construction. Uh, those are all three bedrooms as well, no two bedrooms on the new construction. What the new building would look like, uh, to keep it consistent with the property, it'll be front and side brick veneer, and then the, it'd be the same siding materials they're going to be using on the rehabs. I didn't mention it, but that's okay. Uh, we currently do have, uh, office space, community room, and a offsite, or adjacent office that RACs will be able to have available. They're not development partners on this one, but they're still going to perform the role of our lead referral agent and service provider here, so they'll have private office space there. I just wanted to point out that we're going to, we currently have a playground, and it's going to be looked at, uh, you know, updated, new equipment if needed, and then we're adding this pavilion, which will have space for community gatherings, barbecues, birthday parties, stuff like that for the residents. And it's not shown on here, but right where it says Phase One and Two existing, Melissa, our property manager, she's been working with somebody, I don't want to say because I don't want to get it wrong, but she's working with somebody, either a university or some government agency, on getting a grant for putting in a community garden there, and they come out, help you install the garden, and then they kind of work with you and the residents to help you get it going and establish, and, you know, hopefully it doesn't burn out the first summer, so. Anyway.
We'll make sure you get made it.
Insist.
I guess I could have got the garden club to go.
All kind of volunteer there.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's, that's the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask. If I have a rant or anything, otherwise.
Questions on either project, councilman Hallers, and then councilman Ozleton.
Mr. West, thank you for your presentation and all that. I hope everybody's got a chance to go look at it in Cedar Ridge. There are some always mis, misnomers about what actually that is, and a good thing about the Moro Valley, like you said, with all the, the grocery stores, everything around it, Jeff City, Tren is there non-stop. It's one of their routes that, it, you know, would be hard to even get the, the bus services right there, so I think it's a great location, and, um, you know, with the expansion of what they do down on Militia Drive Two, and, uh, with the prison also being there. I think it's an ideal, ideally suited for that area too, and, uh, well-lit area, very nice. And like I said, grocery stores right there, Dollar General, you know, a lot of amenities that they would, you know, it's just a little walk, 100-yard walk.
Yeah.
I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Ozleton?
I just wanted to say, I'm glad to see you here again after, uh, last year's attempt, and I mean, I'm glad that your kids committed to expanding housing in our community as,
Appreciate it.
as we are, so if at first you don't see, try again next year.
Try again.
So, thank you again for coming out.
All right. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, you've got two. We're going to do resolution. Councilman got that on the table, so if you're ready to vote on 2025 dash 23.
Thomas?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hallers?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Ken Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
And resolution 2025 dash 24, councilman?
Yes, I'd like to, um, will be approved, is our solution?
All right, you've got a motion, a second, and no other questions. You have 24 in front of you for roll call.
Am I to read it, and then I'll do the roll call?
We could do that, too.
Supporting the CDBGDR light tech applications for the Cedar Ridge project.
How are you tapping from?
Yes.
Hallers?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Ozleton?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
Ken Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely? Thomas?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, it takes us to resolution 2025 dash 25.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to sign a contract with PCI Municipal Services LLC for parking operations and management services.
Will you approve the resolution?
Second.
All right, we have that in front of you, winning the perseverance award for tonight. I know Mr. Bangy may, or.
Sure, I can introduce, yeah.
And you're welcome, but you just introduce yourself, Mr. Bangy, if you want to.
Um, yes, so this is a process that's, uh, come, uh, before the council before, so in July, um, there was a resolution that was passed, uh, giving the city administrator authority to begin negotiations for a contract, uh, with PCI for, um, uh, parking services. And so this also came before the Public Houston Planning Committee at their last meeting, and so there is a contract, um, in your packet, and so, um, certainly there, there are questions, but, uh, we have, this is Brian?
Brian Kern, president, one of the owners of PCI Municipal Services.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
Comments you want to make?
No, I mean.
Well, for questions?
I mean, I'm open to answering anything. We put together a contract that we believe is very beneficial for the city. It's a cost-plus type of agreement where you guys keep full control. Uh, you get to make policies, it's our job to do the recommendations and give you our best, uh, examples of other cities and what we've done in the past.
Questions or comments? Councilman Mollman.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Just a couple things that I wanted to point out, you can correct me if there's anything that I've gotten wrong, but, um, first of all, we have a garage that's crumbling. It is literally falling apart right now, and two years ago, over two years ago, it was said the end of its life is coming. So, I've had some contact about why are we replacing the garage? Could we not do a different option? The reality is, it's here, we need to replace the garage. Secondly, um, your proposal actually costs, right now, the way we have it, less than the operating costs that we currently have in the city. So, from a fiscal perspective, this is very fiscally sound, and it makes a lot of sense for us. And thirdly, um, you all ha, bring a lot of expertise to the table. The city does not have the staffing at all to be running shuttles or figuring out how to best utilize our parking while the parking garage is down, or even after. I understand our city lots are usually no more than, on average, 50% used right now. So, um, I'm excited about this contract, and I just wanted to spell those things out. To me, it's a no-brainer, it's fiscally sound, it's needed, and you bring the expertise, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Thomas?
Truth in advertising, I, I was busy with dog rescues all weekend, so I didn't get a chance to read the, the contract, proposed contract until later today. in that city, we're always willing to talk to them as long as they meet our background checks.
Great, thank you very much.
So Councilman Michael and then Councilman West.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there, are there any, in relation to your contract, or this contract, are there any tasks like the department has now that you would or would not be able to take on?
No, we could take on everything that they're currently doing. We know that there's a lot of snow and landscaping, that was all part of the RFP, so we knew that when we were putting it together. So yes, there's everything that they currently do that we can do.
So those wouldn't be plus-ups in the contract or anything, they're included?
That was included in that price that we put together, that we submitted as a proposal. Now again, this is a cost-plus type of agreement, so you guys keep full control. If you come back later and say, you know what, we like that you've done this, we've got some more revenue coming in, we want to do this, we just raise that budget and we go forward with, you know, doing that project. If you say we don't want to do that, we've decided we don't want to do this, and you want to cut out $50,000 from that budget, then that's what we do. Again, it's our job to work with you, it's our job to give you the recommendations of what's the best practices.
And then number of staff, maybe I missed it, how many staff do you anticipate your operation having?
I think we have a total of three full-timers and three part-timers.
I just wanted to share some information. I had a conversation with Kara Stark, President of Downtown Leadership, who was one of the reviewers of the contracts. And she told me, one of the reasons that she gave you high marks and she thinks you got high marks from others was that you were one of the ones that, your company was, one of the ones that emphasized working with all the stakeholders on the parking in the community and meeting the needs as the community saw it in parking. And I just think as well that that's a very important aspect and I appreciate that and look forward to you doing that and working out the plan and reviewing our parking.
Absolutely.
Councilman Allers, then Councilman Millman.
Thank you for being here. A couple, I know this is minutious stuff and all that, but if there's people that will dispute stuff in the, how does, administratively, do they dispute things with you or there's a liaison from the city that works with you? Or, I guess it was the technology, which if you travel anywhere else, you go to a kiosk, put you in your license number and all that stuff and then you have an app that you can eventually upload more time and all that, so bringing everything into the 21st century for the Jeff City area, I know it'll be a big part of what you're doing and signage, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Councilman Mill.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. A couple of questions. One would be to start with city staff, how many positions do we expect to eliminate with this contract? Do we know?
Well, right now I think there are seven FTE positions within parking.
Okay. And we would expect to eliminate our parking if we're contracting it out, is that a fair statement?
Yes. Right, the PCI would take over that role and so there wouldn't be a need for our own parking division at that.
One of the things, either spoken informally or in the document, I can't remember, is that PCI would barely, or barely, very shortly after approval of this contract, bring to council a recommendation on rate increases. What is the expectation on a timeline? Are we talking, like you think next year or a few months?
No, we could actually bring that to you pretty quickly. I mean, we do rate studies in a lot of cities. After we get in and we start doing the evaluation and looking at all the data and gathering our own data, we'll be able to come to you probably within the first two months and give you that rate recommendation. We've already put something into proposal that we think is probably pretty close, but we will, I mean, after we get in and start going and understanding the new garage and all of that and the displacement of those individuals, we'll come back to you with the best rate recommendation.
And if, if a recommendation that this body would approve, say, came up about, you know, two blocks needed new signage or something to reflect a new parking timeframe, whatever it may be, the city's still out, that's outside of the scope of the fee here, right? The infrastructure to do those types of changes?
No, that is all part of it. So this is a cost-plus agreement. So again, we get a management fee and then all the expenses are reimbursable. If you come to us and say we've made a change, we want to put signs on all of these, after what we've been able to show you and recommend, and that ends up costing an extra $100,000, that's your decision. Whether you want to spend the extra $100,000 is totally up to you, but it's not outside of that contract. We can do, we can keep doing whatever you're doing and continue to do more.
We would just need to appropriate more.
Correct, yep.
Thanks. Yes, sir.
Well, I just, I'm going to speak on the idea that there's seven positions being eliminated just because that was talked about, but you know, all the employees impacted have been discussed different options with them and there's still a lot of stuff being talked about. And I just wanted to mention that because I don't want it to be, you know, I don't want those people to read the paper tomorrow and be like, my job's going away, because that's not, that's not how that's going to go. So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified out here because it just kind of got passed over.
Right. Councilman Allen and then Councilman Michael.
And I just want to say too, I would encourage people reporting on this to make sure that the facts are reported, both fiscally, that this is actually fiscally less cost to us than what we're spending now and both related to the garage and the urgency of bringing the garage down. And then again, not to have a headline, seven positions are being eliminated. I just encourage accurate, complete information that comes out from any media or anybody else. Thank you.
Councilman Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to kind of follow up on that a little bit, with a new contract and it stated publicly that those full-time FTE seven, there's not a, there's not a department to attach them to, this is replacing that department. So it's important for our leadership and our staff to communicate, not that you aren't, I'm not implying that, but communicate to our staff to the nth degree and make sure that every effort is made to communicate to them or hand on positions and how that looks and whatever, whoever you may offer or none of those seven, you know, that's be in your lane, not ours, but you're good people who work for the city and we need to make sure we cover down on them, make sure we do the best for them.
Mr. Crane?
Yeah, I might just mention, you know, I think Paul and Kyle and their team and John Fitch have been communicating with all the employees. We have a lot of departments with a lot of different positions and I think a lot of them are going to have the opportunity to look and see if there's something that makes sense for them, they'll also have an opportunity to see if there's something that makes sense with PCI. But obviously what we're trying to do is make sure that everybody's got a place if they're interested. And I think they've done a pretty good job at trying to filter that and do the best they can with the circumstances. But you know, this has been something that's been discussed for quite a few months, so we've had time to kind of prepare to a certain degree.
Yeah, I hope so because they deserve it, for sure.
All right, you've got 2025-25 in front of you for roll call.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Houslt?
Aye.
Joe?
No.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Hey guys, who knows, resolution is adopted.
Thanks, Cam, for being here and for persevering. Appreciate it. All right, we're on item 15. We need to approve the August 4th, 2025, and August 7th, 2025, closed session minutes.
Move to approve in that?
Motion is second.
Which version of the, or is it we're approving both?
There's only one version.
There's only one, I think they went around.
Yeah. So we're approving everything in the yellow packet?
Yeah.
I had a suggestion to make, but I think it has to be, I don't know that I can make this suggestion in open session because it's related to a, it's directly related to a motion in closed session. So I don't know how that works.
I don't know, I'm going to leave it to council.
Yeah, so there's nothing that says that the benefits have to be approved right now and so if it's the prerogative of the city council to take that into closed session for amendment, then I think that's a problem.
Which one is it?
Do you withdraw my motion?
Probably easy.
I will withdraw my motion if it needs to.
I'll withdraw in a second.
Can you say which one it is so we can approve one, so we're not bringing both close, or is there? Is it both of them? No, yeah, I have no problem. I just don't, if I say which one, is that identifying?
That's as part of the date, I think, if there's a, if there's a set of minutes.
You want to come see it?
Date.
Yeah. That'll work.
Move to approve August 4th, closed session minutes.
Motion is second to approve August 4th.
Allen?
Aye.
Houslt?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
No.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Houslt?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
No.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Motion passes, August 4th minutes.
All right, takes us item 16, didn't.
That's okay, it's nine o'clock. There's a reason.
Mine should have been a yes, but.
No big deal. Only thing I was going to mention on the new business was, I'm sure it's no secret to anybody in town, there's some activity at 1510 Close Street, address right, so it's been, like everybody around this table has taken some arrows over that property, so it's kind of nice to see some activity going on there. I would hope that there would be massive stories tomorrow talking about the success for council on your activities on that property. Unfinished business, we have none. Item 18, I want us to work to read this.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public session pursuant to Section 610 021 of our Vice Statutes of Missouri, going to closed session to discuss the following, Attorney Court, privileged subsection one.
I move that the meeting be adjourned and that we move into closed session.
Seconded. We've got a motion is second, we need a roll call vote.
Houslt?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Cam Peter?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Houslt?
Aye.